Okay, I'd like to call to order the committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, May 14th, 2024. First item on our agenda this evening is roll call.
Here.
Lancey?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Piper?
Here.
Sulfah?
Yeah.
Wolf?
Here.
Chantet? Baron?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Ayazi? Malay? Uwer?
Here.
Sharon?
Here.
Vogelsinger. You have the necessary quorum to conduct business this evening. Up second on our agenda this evening is a reminder to please speak directly into the microphone if you come up to speak tonight. Just adjust the microphone so we make sure that you see the green light come on and you can hear yourself in the background. The item three is approval of minutes from February 3rd, 2024, special cow meeting, city council retreat. Motion for those who recommend a council?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Sulfah, second by Beck. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And zero. Up next is item four, which is items to be removed, added, or changed. Do we have anything? Up next would be item five for matters that are not on the agenda this evening. So if anybody in the audience has anything that's not on the agenda, now would be the time to come up to speak to us. And we only need your name for the record. You come up to speak so that way we get your name in the record.
Good evening. My name is Bob McQuillan. Good to be back with you again. I came across an interesting statistic on bestplaces.net while trying to find the words for what I wanted to speak about this evening. Did you know that 52.6% of Batavians are Christians? We are all aware of the division in today's world, but what can an individual do to help change things? Better yet, how can a city like Batavia help change the world? I drove by the Jeffrey Shulke Government Center this afternoon and something hit me. Outside of this building, we, the citizens of Batavia, proudly fly the United States, the state of Illinois, the city of Batavia, and POW flags on two flag poles. Those four flags represent who we are. But we are much more, but we are also much more. If we truly say that we are a loving and inclusive city, shouldn't local groups be represented? The last few years, the city has flown the pride flag during the month of June. During the month of June, Christians honor the Sacred Heart of Jesus. From researching the city's website, it doesn't appear that there is a policy on how to request the flag to be flown. I'm assuming the city council must approve any additional flags that are flown. On a monthly basis, we could add one or two flags from different groups within the city. I would like to request that an agenda item be placed on the next city council meeting, that the Sacred Heart of Jesus flag be flown outside of City Hall during the month of June. My lovely wife has a flag with her if anyone would like to see it. I can also bring it to the city council meeting scheduled for May 20th. Thank you.
Yes, Bob, I'll respond to you. I don't know that I would say, I feel comfortable today to say that we're going to put that on the next council meeting and vote on something. I think it would go to a cow meeting first, and it would be something that we'd have to discuss. So it would, if we're going to discuss that, we would take it to the next cow meeting and have a discussion about it.
Is, do you know if there's a process for asking? I mean, how did the pride flag?
I'm trying to recall how the process went when we, when we did that and voted on the pride flag and put that out.
Proclamation?
I believe there was a proclamation written, but I'm trying to remember the process that got us to that.
I looked for the last two years, and the proclamation was read, but it did not include a flag. There was no wording of a flag.
Well, let us research that, and we'll have that at the next cow meeting. We'll put that on the agenda at a committee of the whole, and we'll discuss that.
Okay. Since June is the month of the Sacred Heart, would you consider putting it up on a different month other than June?
Well, I guess right-
If the discussion, if the discussion goes that way.
Right. We'll have to figure out what happens at the discussions, the next commenting, which will be this month. Is it 24th?
Twenty-
I'm sorry, 28th.
Twenty eighth.
It'll be two weeks from tonight.
That's a fifth Tuesday, so we may not have a meeting then. It would probably be the 11th of June, if I have my calendar correct.
Okay. Thanks very much for your understanding. Look forward to seeing that on an agenda.
All right. Thank you. Does anybody else have anything not on the agenda tonight? And then we'll move into item six, which, oh.
Good evening. My name is Tim McLean, and I have lived with my wife Jean on unincorporated Wagner Road for 25 years. Late last week, we received a letter informing us of the city's desire to annex our property. Apparently, all the other unincorporated lot owners on Wagner Road and others on Redant Road received similar letters late last week. Many of us are here tonight to express our deep concerns and vehement opposition regarding efforts to annex our properties into the city. We view these efforts as an obvious threat to our chosen way of life and as a prohibitive financial burden as well. If I could ask for a show of hands from everyone here who shares these concerns and opposition tonight? The letter we all received last week raises a myriad of unanswered questions, and we do not know with whom we should communicate regarding our questions and concerns. Our questions include specifically, how many properties is the city seeking to annex? And which ones? How long has this annexation been under consideration by the city? What is motivating the current effort of the city to seek annexation of these specific properties now? How does the city believe that annexation would benefit the unincorporated lot owners and our surrounding neighbors who have all greatly enjoyed the existing character of our land and community for decades? How does the city envision that the inherent character of our land and community would be affected? For example, one of our neighbors raises chickens and maintains goats on their five-acre property. How could their use of this land be consistent with owning a city lot? And perhaps most importantly, to virtually all, how does the city envision the allocation of enormous costs to be incurred when all these lot owners are inevitably forced to hook up to city utilities following annexation? These are just a small representation of the volume of questions that we have, and we need to know with whom we should communicate further regarding our questions and concerns. Thank you.
The direct communication would be with Scott Buning from Community Development. We've been, in my mind, we've been doing the annexations of properties that are surrounded by the city or abutting the city properties for about the last decade. We've been actively searching those out, annexing them into the city, and that's just been a policy that the city's had for probably at least the last decade, that we've been doing that. And it does not change what's happening on the property. It does not force you to hook up to anything immediately.
But that's obviously the key word, right? And so that's the concern.
If you listen for one second.
Yeah, yeah.
You have, say you have a septic field in your yard, and you have to replace it. If there is city sewer close enough, that's what you'd have to connect to. The county would not permit the repair or rebuilding of it. So there is a benefit to that, to be able to do that. If it didn't happen that way, you would have to pay for the annexation, and you would have to go through that process. This is the city doing it to try to bring everything that's within the city bounds, boundaries, or surrounded by the city as part of the city.
So, I mean, I am trying to listen carefully what you're saying, and some of the key words are "not immediately" or "if the sewer is close enough." What is "close enough"? And these are questions that we understandably-
And I can't answer that, because I don't have the map in front of me. I don't know the specifics of that.
Because you can imagine the cost we've been told, someone's been told in our, in our area, that it would cost them $100,000 to hook up to the sewer. So obviously, that's a chilling concern for us, because we have many people that's, I mean, it's an overwhelming burden, and we're not getting those, the letter that we received was very vague and ambiguous about those types of issues.
And that's not something that we would seek out to force somebody to do. That's not the reason for doing that. You know, we're not trying to get everybody hooked up to the city sewer or city water. If you have a system that works, and it works for another 50 years, you get to keep that.
And what I've seen in other municipalities that do this is they do define what is "close enough," and then there is some sharing of costs that occur, and we haven't received anything that would give us any sense of comfort regarding that issue.
And again, I don't have the answers in front of me on that.
Okay. So I would speak with Mr. Buning? Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
Anybody else?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Brian Gifford. I live down the road from Tim and Jean. Just standing here to voice my concern as well and my opposition to the annexation letter that I received. You know, I moved to that property for a reason, and it was to be unincorporated. It's a little bit of a way of life. I see a list of benefits that were given, but I see no benefit actually in this list. To speak a little bit more to what Tim said, so five years ago, my septic system failed, and I spoke with Scott, approached him about annexation, thinking, hey, maybe the city can help me out here. And the answer was to bring it in front of my house was $100,000, roughly. And then to connect from my house to that city line was another $10,000 to $20,000. So I truly see no benefit. You know, I reached out in a time of need at that time. Really, no help was given, so I am in direct opposition to this annexation. Thank you.
Right. Anybody else out there want?
Hello. I'm Lisa Kimber. I am also part of the affected properties being potentially forced to annexed into the city of Batavia. I have the five-acre lot that Tim had mentioned has goats and chickens and in the process of setting up a flower farm. I've spoken to some potential future aldermen that may represent me in the future, but first question for you is, you have a topic like this. I find it interesting that the city council is voting on these topics, but yet a lot of the aldermen don't represent unincorporated Batavia. So which residents from unincorporated Batavia did you consult with before the city council even took into consideration voting on a topic such as this? Did anyone?
For annexation?
For annexation. You have a group of members who are voting on a topic.
It's not being voted on tonight.
It's not being voted on tonight, but it was voted on previously, which is why we received the letters. The letters-
No, that was a policy that was instituted by the city a decade or so ago.
Okay.
That we'd go around and look for areas that are contiguous to city property or surrounded by city property, and then we annex those.
So can I get a show of hands then, from the city council members who are here now? How many of you were actually here 10 years ago when this topic was voted on? Okay, so only two of you, but yet the entire city councils, it seems like this issue is continuing to be pushed forward by an old agenda, when only two of the members here have actually voted on this.
Not true.
Done it over time, so it wasn't just 10 years ago that it was done. It was done most recently, just a few months ago.
Was it off Hart Road?
Yeah, off Hart Road.
And it's unfortunate that that happened to member, like, community members on Hart Road as well. When you have these votes, though, do you actually bring in anyone from the affected areas to seek their, but you seek their opinions on these topics before you vote on them? Because we receive, to me, I don't know if anyone-
No, and they can either contact city staff, or they can attend the meetings where it's being discussed, and they have been afforded the opportunity, just like you are doing today, to address the city council on that matter.
So this specific meeting, or what types of meetings are members like, like, are committee members like myself supposed to join before I get a letter? Because I would have- Because I would have loved to have known before I received a letter that these sort of things were being discussed about my specific property. I didn't receive a letter until last week.
Our property has not been discussed by this council at all yet.
Okay. To my underst, and Jennifer, this is probably my interpretation from our conversation. I had called out, you know, some aldermen to get an understanding of how this process works. And to my understanding, this was previously voted on by, you know, the aldermen in those, in those groups.
No.
This property's never been discussed yet.
Okay. So for these sort of-
Other properties.
Yeah, other-
And that's what I said, that we've annexed other properties within the city of, to bring them in within the city of Batavia.
Okay.
So there were donuts throughout the city of Batavia that we've done that with. So every alderman that's on here has represented an area that has been annexed into the community.
Okay. So my specific donut that you're referring to me as, I mean, I have a 150-year-old barn on my property. My property has been there for many, many years, obviously. My neighbors own the farmhouse that is right next door that used to be part of the property that I own. The surrounding area used to be cornfields and it was then established around my, like, my unincorporated area. So the city of Batavia chose to purchase property around my home and now because you own property around my area, then we're considered a donut and it gives you the right to potentially try to force us into annexation?
We don't own the property.
The city of Batavia.
The city does not own it.
But, okay.
Private property owners own all that.
But it's part of the city of Batavia, but because of the zoning laws and those sort of things that allowed those to become part of the city of Batavia, it's caused this donut. We didn't always used to be a donut. So my concern is that now because all of a sudden we're a donut, it gives the city these rights and abilities to almost force us into annexation against anyone's will. I don't know that anyone in my entire area of the 29 affected homes is on board with this taking place because of our way of living. Many of us purposely moved here because we intentionally wanted to live in unincorporated areas. I just moved here three years ago. I intentionally was looking for a home in an unincorporated neighborhood because I grew up in unincorporated areas. This is important to me and I'm very concerned that this is something that feels like it's being threatened now. And I've had really great conversations with many of you as well as Scott and I appreciate everyone's time and hearing me out, listening to my frustrations, but I'm concerned because even if I have an annexation agreement, it allows me 20 years of an annexation agreement. I didn't move here with the intention of just being here 20 years and having my property protected, you know, to have this, you know, what I'm creating is like a farmland protected. I want to ensure that my children, when they inherit this property, will also have this property protected so that they can continue to raise goats or chickens or have a flower farm should they choose. But it seems like that is now being threatened. I might not even have that as an opportunity. Can other, like, what are other thoughts on this? Because it's, I'm very concerned. I moved here for this and many others did too.
If you have a list of those specific provisions, those specific protections that you want baked into an annexation agreement, is that something that we can work into an agreement?
Yes. I talked to Ms. Kimber about it, that, you know, she had specific concerns about the animals or other things that are being done on the property, that yes, those are things that could be incorporated into an annexation agreement.
But Scott, can you clarify? That is up to 20 years.
That's correct. By statute, that we are limited to 20 years. Correct.
But if I stay unincorporated, I have those, I have those allotments longer than 20 years. I did not move here with the intention of moving in 20 years. I love the property that I have. As I've spoken to many of you, I feel I'm a good steward of the land. I invest a substantial amount of money every year in planting native species and those sort of things. I'm improving this five-acre lot that I have and I would like my children to one day inherit this and be able to do the same things on it that I am doing now and not have that 20-year period cut off in 20 years.
So maybe Scott can correct me if I'm wrong, but if you remain the owner of the property in 20 years, if you want to then renew that agreement, the statute will allow it. It's just a 20-year time limit in terms of the annexation agreement. Is the time limit for the original agreement, can it be then renewed?
No. Unfortunately, it cannot. No. It's a 20-year limitation by statute. Now, the city council at that point in time may elect not to make any, you know, specific changes to it and let her continue doing what she wants to do. But, you know, the guarantees are specifically limited to 20 years in the agreement.
Okay.
Thank you, Scott. I have a ton of other questions, but I will let others get up, so thank you.
And know that this item will come up again at a future Cowell meeting. So there will be dedicated time for our discussion and public input on the annexations in that area at a future Cowell meeting. You need to come up and use the microphone. We need to get it on.
What's next in this process and at what meetings will this issue be addressed?
So certainly contact Scott with any questions that you have and Scott will work with any of you who would like to, as you've indicated, have some alteration to the annexation agreements and things that you would like to see in there. The hopes is that we could come to an agreement on a voluntary annexation, but if we're unable to do so, if it becomes an involuntary annexation, then that gets scheduled for a committee of the whole meeting and it will actually be an item on the agenda and there will be discussion by council and the opportunity for you to address council about it before they vote on it.
And as I understand, what kind of notice would we have for what meeting that would be at?
There will actually be a mailed certified notice. If we elect, there's two different things. If there's a voluntary annexation, we would work with you and advise you of the meetings and plus there is a public hearing on any annexation agreement that happens. If it is an involuntary annexation that proceeds, you get a certified notice from the city about what dates the meetings will be discussed and then it'll be moving forward. But you would get a certified notice about it before we would take any action.
That's helpful. Like a couple of weeks or do you know?
It's, oh, we're talking, you know, by the time we get around to it, it's going to be a couple of months at this point.
Okay. And is it at the committee of the whole where this gets addressed again then?
Correct. Yes.
All right. Thank you very much.
Those are on Tuesdays.
Okay. Thank you.
I just have a clarifying question. So let's say somebody has a property and they don't take any action to do a formal and let's say they have a farm. What happens to their property if it gets involuntarily brought in? Do they then lose that farm and it becomes whatever is zoned for that district?
What we typically have done is allow the use until the property changes hands.
Right. Yeah, well, actually, to clarify further, the, if the use is legal under county zoning, it is allowed to continue as a non-conforming use. And as long as they, that owner and any subsequent owner continues to do it within the parameters of, you know, what they were doing, that can continue indefinitely. So they're allowed to, you know, run it as a farm, have animals, whatever the case may be, you know, and for an indefinite period of time.
Thank you.
There's no one further, then we will move on to the consent agenda. Hold on, I'm back.
Your honor, the consent agenda reads as follows. Resolution 2024-77-R authorizing execution of the contract for the 2024 street resurfacing and sidewalk replacement program with Geneva Construction Company. Resolution 2024-78-R adopting I.DOT Resolution BLR 14220 form to appropriate $1,640, I'm sorry, $1,640,419 from the state motor fuel tax. Ordinance 2024-42 amendments to the official zoning map for multiple properties 501, 502, Ellen Lane, 427, 502, 503, 514, Roberts Lane, 503 through 625, Odd, and 504 through 608, Even, McKinley Street, 1017 through 1111, Odd, and 922 through 1018, Even, Walnut Street, and 1119 through 1125, Odd, Morton Street. Ordinance 2024-39 amending the text of the zoning code, section 4.216, electric charging stations. Motion to approve of a bid to sell land at the northeast corner of Main Street and Deer Path Road. Resolution 2024-75-R approving task order number nine with HR Green Incorporated for a river and state street retaining wall and stairs rehabilitation. Resolution 2024-74-R approving contract with TransGuard Solutions for substation wildlife fence installation. Resolution 2024-79-R approving a contract with Mead Inc. to perform 35-kilovolt underground circuit upgrade at 1801 Suncast Lane. Resolution 2024-76-R authorizing execution of a contract with Hor Construction, Inc. for the 2024 storm and sanitary sewer lining project. Ordinance 2024-44 declaring certain property to be surplus and authorizing the sale. Ordinance 2024-45 authorizing exercise of an option to purchase real estate and execution of a purchase of sale agreement for 910 through 916, First Street. I would move we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Motion by Beck, second by Lehman. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Next will be item seven, which is ordinance 2024-40 amendment to the official zoning map to modify a planned development overlay district granted by ordinance 19-15 and modified by ordinance 21-45. Zach?
All righty. On the May 1st Plan Commission Zoning Board Appeals Meeting, a public hearing was conducted to amend the existing planned development and a condition use permit for a bank and other financial institution with a drive-through use facility. Ordinance 2024-040 would amend the official zoning map to modify an existing planned development overlay district to allow a monument sign on the property of 1992 McKee Street and to allow 14 parking spaces in excess of the zoning code's maximum parking regulations for a total of 28 parking spaces. The Redmond Company on behalf of Earth Movers Credit Union has applied for a condition use permit to locate 3,100 square foot drive-through credit union. They are proposing drive-through facilities with four lanes, which one of those lanes will be dedicated for an ATM. In part of this, with the drive-through a condition use permit is required due to the traffic potentially that's generated from it and the necessary stacking required. The applicant is proposing a substantial improvement to landscaping on the site that is, that is considerate of the surrounding neighbors to the east, which are residential, and it is adding a kind of a layering effect to provide more screening from what's already there for the detention basins for the overall subdivision project that was formerly the Avenue Chevrolet. At the public hearing, it was, it was determined that this would be a relocation and expansion of the existing North Aurora branch. So they would be moving, they'd be moving that location up here to Batavia to expand their footprint in the Fox Valley region. With this plans, they are proposing that this would be the first architectural, the first building that would have this architectural design. It is a modern design with a lot of glass and space that can be utilized in many different ways as opposed to your traditional bank facilities. The North Aurora branch currently has roughly 4,000 in-person monthly transactions, which has created a need for an additional drive-through lanes and a location with adequate parking facilities for staff and customers. Again, the applicant has requested through the planned development to allow for 14 additional parking spaces for a total of 28 parking spaces on the site. Staff recommends that the community of the whole approve ordinance 2024-40 and 2024-041 as presented. I have the site plan showing the landscape up on the screen. Staff does have several conditions that would fill in the gaps with ground cover as far as, there are some visual gaps on the northern property line, which would be on the right side of the screen that show some spaces that trees could go. However, there is trees planted on the Menards Detention Basin to the, to the north and so this would be complimentary. We're looking for some ground cover in terms of perennial shrubs and mulch beds just to kind of complement that and then some other small spaces on the site plan, just again, enhancing what's already out there and then complementing what's on their site. Is there, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Yeah?
Just for clarification, is this directly behind the Starbucks?
Correct. Yes. For clarification purposes, this is Lot D, which is directly behind the Chipotle and Starbucks and Raising Cane's and Bel Tire are also on this private road. So to the north is the Menards Detention Basin, to the east is the overall subdivision's detention basin, and then further to the east is a residential subdivision. I had spoken this week with one of the residents who actually immediately backs up to the detention basin and in discussions with him, he was unable to make the plan commission. However, he was ecstatic that this was what he called the perfect transitional use, you know, noting that the credit union is a community amenity, but also it is something that's less intensive as opposed to what's primarily on Randall Road such as the drive-through restaurants. So the hours of operations of this would be less and would also help mitigate sound and other visual impacts that you may see and hear from those other facilities. So he was very happy to see that this was going in and then was appreciative of all the landscaping that's been out there so far and was excited to see what would be coming.
And is this the last lot to be developed?
Correct. This is the last lot to be developed. The lot is tricky. It does have some easements that run through it for utilities. So the design of the, of the building, the design and location of the building has to be considerate of those easements. So that is something that really only a smaller building or smaller use like this could go there in regards to the architectural design of the building. I can pull that up here. It is a rather tasteful building with a lot of glass, modern materials. It's something from a floor plan perspective, should the bank fail, it could be repurposed into another use. I find that this size and architecture is consistent with similar products such as Dr. Wazio's facility on Wilson Street. And, you know, again, it is complimentary to the overall development and something that, again, is transitional. The Plan Commission and the original approval of the site felt that a drive-through restaurant was not appropriate here. However, they felt that this was an appropriate use of the site, given its limitations and quite frankly, unique design in the actual site itself. Yes.
I would comment that, you know, we had a fair amount of comments when that got developed out there because it was clear-cutting what was just an old dilapidated forest and that little strip behind this, you know, to the east of the Avenue Chevy's property. And now to have this in there with another building and more landscaping provides just a second buffer to the neighborhood that's back there. So happy to see this go through. Abby?
Two questions. Can you review for us how we compute our parking maximums for these types of things? And then second, what the credit union kind of uses justification for needing to double that?
Yeah. So in the zoning code, we have parking minimums established and essentially we allow for it to be 125% of the minimum. The minimum is based on square footage, so the ratio is a calculation of X parking spaces per square footage. That came out to, the maximum comes out to be approximately, again, 14. The credit union itself has identified the need for additional parking spaces based on their operations at their four other locations that are similar in size to this within the region. They have two in Montgomery. I believe there's one in Aurora and I believe another one in Yorkville. So based on their current operations and their anticipated staffing levels and services that they are offering at this facility, they feel that the requested parking is appropriate. You know, our parking minimum is based on banks and financial institutions as a whole. It doesn't differentiate your traditional bank such as Chase and a credit union. It treats them the same. However, the applicant has indicated that they look to provide more in-person services that you traditionally used to see at banks such as loan officers, financial advisors, you know, bank, in-person bank telling, you could, among a variety of other services. And during discussions, I believe that they have indicated that eight to 10 staff members may be employed here at any given moment, which would take up a substantial amount of their parking. They are here also tonight and they can add to my comments and my answers as well if you have additional questions for them on that.
Eight to 10 employees at any given time, which would then be 18 customers?
You know, some of their customers, you know, from what they've conveyed, and again, the applicant might want to come up and add to this, but they have conveyed that some people come for five, 10-minute stops where they go in, others are there for prolonged periods, half hour, hour, depending on what services they are seeking and, you know, if you want to add or anything. if you want to add anything in regards to the operation for the parking.
How you doing? Nick Farshado, site civil engineer on the project and also representative of Earth Mover Credit Union tonight. Our understanding is they have typically 10 users or employees, and at any one time, each of those employees can be servicing a client. So that right there is at least 20 with potential people in line waiting as well, and that's where there's a little bit of overflow. So that's where we came up with the number of 28. In impervious, I wanted to bring up as a site civil engineer comparatively to the rest of the sites that were developed for the Avenue Marketplace, the Starbucks, Tripoli, and the Belt Tire are all almost 75% to 80% impervious on their property. Even though that we're asking for the parking to be increased, we're only going to be at 54% impervious. So the Belt Tire, which is the most close in size, is like 1.2 acres, we're a little bit under, like 1.1. That one's closer to 80% impervious, and we're only 54, and we're asking for this additional. So in terms of environmental and our landscaping, we are actually providing much more open space area than all the Randall Road properties did during their development. Yeah, Zach, just want to point out, I also was the civil engineer on the Avenue Market subdivision and then on each individual lot. So if there's any questions on there, I can also speak to those.
So if there are no other questions, Abby?
I think I have to make this comment every time that I'll feel comfortable voting for these when I feel like there is an alternative that we are proposing to developers that want to have variances in terms of pervious versus impervious, and we still haven't had that conversation, so I'll be voting no.
Motion that we recommend to council, ordinance 2024-40, amendment to the official zoning map to modify a planned development overlay district granted by ordinance 1915 and modified by ordinance 2145. Motion by Wolf, second by Solfa. Roll call, please. Wolf?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi? Malay? Uwer?
No.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogel Singer?
I am going to vote aye because I do like the building and understand the need. I am with Alderman Buck, and I would like to have a conversation about parking spaces and reducing that number. Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Beck?
No.
Piper?
No.
Okay, now I'll go on to the council with a positive recommendation, eight to three. All right, up next is item eight, which is ordinance 2024-41, granting a conditional use permit for a bank and other financial institution with drive-through facilities. This will be the actual ordinance to grant the conditional use on that property for the drive-through. So any questions? And I'll make the motion that we recommend to council, ordinance 2024-41. Motion by Wolf, second by Solfa. Roll call, please. Wolf?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi? Uwer?
No.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogel Singer?
Aye.
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Beck?
No.
Piper?
No.
Solfa?
Aye.
Same thing, three. We'll go on to council with a positive recommendation. Up next is item nine, ordinance 2024-43, approving an amendment to a planned development granted by ordinance 16-82 for 512 Blaine Street. Splain and Sons applicant. Drew?
So just put on screen the rendering that Mr. Splain provided, but this is an amendment, or what's before you tonight is an amendment to ordinance 1682, which was the original planned development ordinance for the Blaine Street School renovation that was done 2016, when Mr. Splain, who was co-applicant on that project, sought approvals of that property. We classified that particular property, or, well, the overall property is R2, but the project included a development lot that was for future single-family use. So the lot was set aside or created at that same time, but it's been vacant since that time. So Mr. Splain is looking to, or to put a single-family residence on the property, and he is looking to, over the garage, have a secondary dwelling unit, which is allowed by code in the R1H district, which provides the, under the planned development, the regulations for this particular property. As part of it being an R1H property, he is looking for floor area ratio relief. The district or the regulation would be for a 0.5. He is looking to have a 0.7 floor area ratio. The other major modifications, he is looking for are related to the garage. The residence would be a three-story building. The garage would be a two-story where there is a garage on the first floor for three cars, and then there would be a secondary dwelling unit on the second floor. So the floor area ratio relief, because of that, essentially is to allow additional 1,400 square feet approximately on the site through that relief. The other items are related to, like I said, the setbacks for the garage. Because of the height of the structure, the requirements would be that the height would be increased, or the setbacks would increase as the height increases. So the applicant is looking for 5.5-foot side setbacks. The conditions of the approval would require that he would provide the compliant 11-foot setback at the rear, which he was agreeable to do so. And then the fourth modification addresses the maximum accessory structure size on a property. Both that change, or both that item and the setbacks, were items that were modified since Mr. Splain has owned the property, and that was one of the reasons he cited for the request. But essentially, the floor, basically, we have the regulation for the maximum amount of square footage for the accessory structure that's based on the overall lot size. He is exceeding that, so he is asking for relief for that. So at the hearing, generally, the Plan Commission was supportive of the proposal. There was four members that publicly addressed the commission, some with questions and generally just questions about the project and some concerns about the secondary dwelling that was proposed. But the Plan Commission did overall support the request for relief and recommended approval by a vote of five to one for the items that are within the planned development ordinance before you tonight. And they did a vote six to zero to recommend approval of the administrative use permit, which is contingent on council approval. So staff does recommend approval of the ordinance before you tonight with 2024-043, and the applicant is here if you have questions of him as well.
Anybody have any questions? I know Mike has done quite a few houses in that area and, you know, had real good success with pretty much any house he's touched or any lot he's built on, so.
He does good work. I grew up in that neighborhood, and he's done a lot of stuff around there. I mean, that Blaine Street School sat empty forever, and now it's beautiful. This is right behind it, so it'll just add on, I mean, it'll make a little corner niche of his little stamp.
Other questions? I'll make the motion that we recommend to council, ordinance 2024-43, approving an amendment to the planned development granted by ordinance 16-82 for 512 Blaine Street. Motion by Wolf, second by Solfa. Roll call, please. Wolf?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogel Singer?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Piper?
Aye.
Solfa?
Aye.
I'll go on to council with a positive recommendation. Next is item 10, which is a discussion on the Skyline Drive intersection, or lack thereof. Good evening.
Good evening. Can you hear me? So I'm gonna just give you the background on this project, and I know there are a lot of residents here who would like to speak, so I'm gonna keep my presentation a little short and let the discussion happen. So this is overall just to show where the Skyline connection is. This is where the project is. This is the wind mat. There is your Randall Road, Fabian, McKee Street, so you can see the quadrant where the project is gonna take place. We are also, this summer, we are making the connection on Branson, so that you know there will be a bridge over the creek. So we are doing a, I would not say similar, but it's kind of similar connection in that neighborhood, Windermere subdivision. So here is a close-up of that project where you can see the skyline coming in. From the north, here is the south side of Skyline. They don't line up, so it's kind of offset a little bit from, it's been like that since like 2006, when this subdivision was developed. Here is another view of Skyline looking south. Again, it's just a Google Map view. That is what it looks like from the, looking north, from the south side. Just a few fact, Skyline Drive connection has been planned since 2006, when the Windermere subdivision came in. Community Development Department notified Geneva Township trustees and the Highway Commissioners about the annexation that we did in 2023. The city council annexed that additional right-of-way to make the connection through ordinance 2312. The staff, project staff presented the budget in 2023 for 2024 budget for $150,000. The benefits of this project, the connection of Skyline Drive would help to promote city's strategic goals, which is connectivity and improving public safety. It will also help, it will also help with the EMS response time and another access to the subdivision that's now disconnected through this Skyline Drive. And obviously, it's a connection during emergency. When there is an accident or some roads are blocked for various reasons, people can take this road to go to their destinations. Residents were sent a notification in March 2023 that, because whenever we go and survey any area, because the plans were developed in 2006, so we wanted to make sure that everything is still same way when the plan was developed. So we send a notification saying there will be surveyors, it's mostly engineering staff, that they are working in the area, and we told them that subsequent communication will be sent to them about this project. We have not bid it out yet. It's still in the planning process, but we thought, we have actually received a few phone calls, emails from residents, so we thought it's probably a better idea to bring the residents and everybody in, discuss the project, and see what the council wants to do about this project going forward. So the project hasn't been bid, a contractor hasn't been chosen, or anything hasn't happened yet. So with that, if you have any question that I can answer, I'll be happy to answer.
Anybody have any questions that were hot? In your research when you were putting this together, do you recall or find any evidence of why that was put in, offset, and not connected back in 2006?
I think.
When it happened, when that subdivision was built? Was that just a mistake by the contractors and the developer?
No, I think actually at that time, they developed a plan to widen the southern part of Skyline. I'm calling it southern just because where the offset is, and to connect to the northern part. I didn't see any research on it. What my guess would be that how they put the plots in, you know, the houses, they wanted to make sure that everything lines up, and they didn't want to make any of the lots smaller, you know, by turning it. So it's a straight road down.
I just remember when it was built and after realizing, you know, going out there that that was not connected and not right, you know, that it just never came back up to be redone.
It was always planned that southern portion will be widened to slowly move to mid with the northern part. So it seems like the plans were developed in 2006 with that intention itself.
Does anybody else on the council have any comments or questions?
I do. Do we know, was the neighborhood on the Batavia side built prior to the neighborhood on the Geneva Township side?
I would think yes. I don't know that answer, but I would think yes. No?
Okay, I need to stop everybody. Unless you're at the microphone, using the microphone, you do not talk. I don't want to hear anything from the public in that respect. Respect everybody else that's up here having a discussion. We will listen to you, and we will not interrupt you. Thank you.
I don't know. That's what I would guess.
Okay. And do you know, at any time, are there any plans to put sidewalks into Skyline on the Batavia side and connect the sidewalk?
So Batavia side has sidewalk already. So if you are asking whether we are going to extend it, we will need right-of-way from the residents to build sidewalk, because we don't own any property or any right-of-way on the south side.
Okay.
But yeah, if residents are willing to give right-of-way, we can build a sidewalk. But it's more than just building a sidewalk, because they have open ditch system, so we'll need to have carbon gutter, we'll need to have storm system, unless, we haven't surveyed that portion, so we don't know the viability of just putting the sidewalk on a ditch section. It's possible, but we haven't looked at all that.
Do you know, are there like any issues from, on the Batavia side, that may require some of the infrastructure to be placed in in upcoming years?
Can you repeat the question?
Like any infrastructure, you know, because you mentioned there's no sidewalks because we don't own that, no curbs or anything. I wasn't sure, because I know it's very hilly through there as I drove through both sections of the area to take a look at it. You know, I just noticed the hills, and I wasn't sure if there had been complaints from the Batavia residents as far as any flooding issues that they've encountered with that.
Alderman Behrens, you keep referencing the Batavia side. You mean the unincorporated side?
The skyline, I guess the south side, is that?
The south side is unincorporated.
It's unincorporated? Okay.
Yes, yeah. So the Batavia, in this context, the Batavia side would be the north side. So the south side does not have sidewalks, it has the ditches, it has, it's the unincorporated area.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. All right. Time.
Any other questions? Counsel, Sarah?
Yeah, I have, this is my neck of the woods. Along the lines of the hills, a huge concern that I have with this project is when you show that the way that they're misaligned, cars traveling southbound from Fabian would essentially run into any pedestrian or cyclist heading north on Skyline. I understand based on Gary's drawing that the street is intended to be widened, is that correct?
Yes.
Significantly so?
I would say yes. Define significantly. Define significant, but it will be.
Enough to prevent a car running into a person, or?
Yes, yes. It will be a soft transition into the south side.
Okay. The road is hilly and curvy. At the bottom of the hill, if you were to come all the way from Fabian, if it connected, you would go downhill the whole way. Generally, as I drive downhill, I pick up speed. That hill stops, and also if you're coming northbound from McKee, you are driving downhill. Both of those roads go downhill until they meet at an intersection that only has a two-way stop right now. If this project were to go through, is there a possibility of making that a four-way stop? Because there is a park just west of this intersection, and my children have learned to ride their bikes through it, other children I know have. There are some people, it just seems like a potentially dangerous situation to have cars coming from Fabian all the way through without there being a stop sign on Skyline.
That's something police department will look at. I'll defer it to the police department to answer that.
That would be in the township, though, so that actually would be.
Oh, the township, yeah.
Because Alderman Vogel singer, are you talking about Skyline Drive and Pine Needle? Is that the intersection?
Skyline and Spring Green is the intersection, where Spring Green has the stop signs, but Skyline does not, and that is like the low point of.
Valley there.
The valley, yeah, exactly.
I, I think that would be the township's decision.
Yeah. Because it's unincorporated.
To put that in there as, as it being in an unincorporated area.
So we wouldn't be able to have the power to put a stop sign there? Or would we be able, is that where an intergovernmental agreement could possibly take place if this is mutually?
That could be part of this, because I think that that is important, that we look at it as a bigger picture, not just the connection, but what does that connection provide? How does that connection get?
Yeah. Thank you, Rahat. That's the intersection. So at that intersection too, there is bus stops, there is kids there regularly different times throughout the day, and then just a little bit off to the left, you see that loop, that's a park. So kids from the neighborhood that I live in and the new neighborhood will travel there. Yeah, so I think, and Rahat, could you show just a little bit north on Skyline too, where that curve is? There is all that foliage and the curve. I'm not saying I want to remove the foliage, I like trees, but you can go further down, further down, sorry. Yeah, just right there, it is hard to see what's coming, so if there were to be a stop sign added, I think that signage in advance too.
But those will, it's, it's all in township, so township highway commissioner will have to weigh in on all that.
But if we go through with this project, is that something where we could request, we could formulate an intergovernmental agreement?
If they were amenable to wanting to do that.
Terms, okay.
I would hope that they'd want to try to make it as safe as possible, you know, and if, if there's only a one-way, you know, a two-way stop.
Right.
And a four-way stop would be warranted with more traffic, then yes, I would think that would be something they would want to do.
Okay.
Wouldn't that be something the residents could talk to their, the unincorporated representatives to be able to say?
Council commissioner.
Stop signs there?
Yeah. Listen.
Have we heard, have we spoken to the township about this at all? And what are their, what have they said?
They are opposed to the connection. They filed a suit to reverse the annexation, which was dismissed by the judge, and they are appealing that decision.
In addition to pushing for a side, I'm sorry, a stop sign, where Sarah was mentioning it, on the Batavia, on the north side, where we do have more control as folks are coming down that hill, because it is wider, are there opportunities to do other traffic calming there, like a chicane or something that will slow traffic as they approach that new connection and start continuing down that hill and around the corner, that we can do some traffic calming there on our, on our side?
Yeah, I mean, absolutely, and one of the things that we'll be bringing forward to you early in the next meeting is, on Millview Drive, we are proposing a bike path, on-street bike path. So that's something we can probably look at and see whether we can do a on-street bike path, four feet on both sides, and still have enough vehicle lanes. So those, those will be, a dedicated bike lane probably would be more appropriate for, for pedestrians and bike, bikers and for vehicles, everybody.
Yeah, that would be awesome, but something with a little bit more like to slow down the cars is also what I'm thinking about.
Like an island in the middle.
Wow.
Because if you put an island in the middle, that almost then aligns the road.
Right.
Straight up.
We'll say we do have that situation on Bird Lane, where there is an island in the middle, and that we've had lots of complaints from residents about.
Maintenance.
The problem that that creates is that trucks will stop there who aren't, don't have permission to pull up into driveways, and then a whole side of the road is blocked. But we should look at, you know, a bunch of different alternatives and the pros and cons of each.
That the, my first experience with islands is that the maintenance is always an issue. Obviously, sprinkling island is very difficult in an area like that.
I want to hear negatives at this point on that. I want to think of ideas and pros and cons on it.
No, I know, I know, I'm just, I'm just, and then, you know, mowing the island, I'm just putting it out so that you know. That's, that's, Naperville, where I used to work, had gone through that evolution and had to go through that grown-up process of what to do with islands, so.
Mark?
I know we're saying that there's safety things, and I get what we're trying to accomplish with that, but I, if the south side of this had sidewalks and was, wasn't, what is a dead-end street right now and has a sign there that says dead-end street, we are introducing risk, in my opinion, that, and I know that that's what a lot of the residents out there are gonna say. Nobody goes down the street except for the people that live there, and I've lived on dead-end streets before, and yeah, it's, it's nice because it's your own little haven. And if there, if we're looking for connectivity south, like from a pedestrian standpoint, there's a bike path just east of here. So I know some of the things we're trying to accomplish, but I don't think that we have to do everything just for the sake of accomplishing these goals. I see that Couth Lane looks like that's meant to at some point. Connect west if somebody were to buy that property, and you'd have connectivity in the future if somebody were to buy and develop that property. I don't know what's going on there, to be honest, but I just, I just think it's unnecessary. I'm against it. Just leave it at that.
So I'm looking at the, the map here, and it appears that this would be the only residential north-south cut-through from Fabian down to McKee Street in this area, is that correct?
Branson. When the bridge gets built, will be also be north-south.
I see. Well, that's north-east dish, but not a direct south. My concern is, I mean, we've been sitting around this table for the past year, talking about road safety, speed issues, pedestrian safety, and trying to increase that, the safety issues throughout the rest of our town and community, and I feel like this is kind of going in the opposite direction of that, where we are opening up a roadway without taking into consideration speed issues, pedestrian issues, bicyclist, children, any of that. So as we've been here talking about road diets and all these other issues, trying to pull back and make things safer, then we're over here being like, oh, but we're just gonna open this up and kind of ignore everything else we've been discussing, and I'm not comfortable with that. So until we're ready to do this correctly with sidewalks, stop signs, have all, everything buttoned up, I'm just not comfortable just opening this up and then just crossing our fingers and hoping it goes well, so I'm against this.
Could you just zoom down a little bit so we can see a little bit more to our west Keep on going, right, right there. I've taken Windmath Road many times from Fabian down to McKee. It's a nice, direct, north-south situation, and I believe many drivers have done it that way, who are familiar with the area, and I just don't see, I, I understand some of the concerns, but in terms of the concern saying that this is all of a sudden gonna be some big old connective way between Fabian to McKee and everybody's gonna start using this, I don't see it. It's just a neighborhood street still. People who want to get from Fabian to McKee are gonna still use Windmath, because that's the way that road's been forever. I mean, so I understand some of the concerns about, you know, this, some of the safety concerns, but I don't see this as all of a sudden being, we're gonna take a left on Cambridge, and we're gonna take a, or left or right, whichever way you're going on Fabian, and then we're gonna take the left onto Skyline, and we're gonna zigzag that thing around to go down to McKee Street to connect from Fabian. I mean, so the concerns about this all of a sudden becoming some big old highway between Fabian and McKee, I just don't, I don't see it.
Except for all those residents, all those neighborhoods will use that. That will be the Morton Drive of this neighborhood.
Those are the residents that live there, though.
Yeah, but right now they have to.
It's a residential neighborhood.
But they have to go out to Windmath or Randall Road if they're going up to Walmart.
That proves the whole connectivity situation, though. Allen?
Obviously, we've gotten a lot of input from residents on this issue, but, and I'm guessing that most of the residents here tonight are gonna speak up against this connectivity, but I do want to say that I have gotten several emails and several residents of the neighborhood who've reached out to say they are in support of this, because they do want that connectivity to be able to get to where they're trying to go. So I'm just another side of it.
And I was gonna point out that the connectivity issue, to me, lends to an easier drive to do that. If I have to go all the way out to Windmath to get through there to get back to Fabian so that I can go to the clinic that's out there, I'm gonna drive whatever the speed limit is, and me normally a little bit faster. If I'm going through a residential neighborhood and there's kids out there on their bikes or walking down the side of the road, I'm not gonna drive as fast. And it's an easier pathway to get through there.
Yeah, but Alan, we've seen people drive on Morton. Not everybody drives responsibly.
I, I understand that, and again, we can't legislate against somebody that's a bad driver, or that wants to break the law.
But we get to make decisions right now on how we move forward with making our neighborhood safe, so.
Right, and I think making it connected is better. If we force that traffic out to Randall, or we force that track, traffic out to Windmath, that puts people in a different mindset to drive.
But those roads are created for traffic.
And this is needed for connectivity, and it was supposed to be put through when the development was done. And somewhere along the way, we as the city dropped the ball and didn't get that to happen. And if it would have happened then, it would be done, and we wouldn't have this meeting right now. We'd have that connectivity, and we wouldn't have the issue.
Sarah?
To your point, I carpool, I live on Trout, I carpool with somebody that lives on Senate. I can see her house, I pick her up five times a week to drive to Marmion. I can't get there, so I have to go all the way around. One of the complicated ways takes an incredibly long time. So this would make several days of my life easier. Also, on McKee, I live right where the speed limit goes up, and I hear the pickup trucks, not to stereotype, you know, whatever, there's drivers of all kinds of cars that speed, but I hear these vehicles just slam on the gas as they go down McKee, past my house. It scares me that they'll possibly be then using Skyline as a cut-through, because if you've ever, Windmath is great a lot of the time, but if you've ever tried to turn left onto Fabian from Windmath between three-thirty and six-thirty PM, it is a nightmare, and there is a line of cars that you cannot believe. So I think a lot of people that, I think this has the potential to become one of those cut-throughs. I think people, lots of people speed, so it is setting up situations that aren't currently there. And my biggest concern is that we don't have the control to say, we're gonna do this, and we need to add a stop sign to make it perfect. We, we can't do both of those things. We now can't add the sidewalks. So those are the concerns that I have about this, because it is going to be a big change, and I know change is scary whenever it happens, but I think that the, the situation is unique with the different government bodies that are involved.
I guess, I'll address the, you know, the scary part about not having a sidewalk out there. I grew up out there. We never had sidewalks. We rode down Main Street to work, or to school, and, and basically you had to watch out for semi-trucks at seven o'clock in the morning on your way to school, from Windmath Road to Gusterson School. And the reality of not having sidewalks in neighborhoods is all over this city. We have different neighborhoods, east side, west side, that have no sidewalks, that have no curb and gutter, and then we have a section three blocks beyond that that's brand-new, that has sidewalks, curbs, gutters, everything, and they coexist fine. Kids know how to do that. People know how to do that. So I don't worry about that. It's the distracted drivers that I worry about.
For sure. Well, and setting up, making sure that the, for that exact reason, I'm less concerned with the sidewalks than many other things. I just, kind of, exactly what Leah said, I would like to make sure that we can do this right if we're gonna do it. I am in full support of connectivity. This would make my life a great deal easier personally. I just am hesitant because of the reasons that I outlined, and sidewalk is not, definitely not the top of the list.
And I think before we were to go through with this, we are gonna have to have a meeting, or we have a representative, or we have somebody here from Geneva Township, and we go through and we talk about what would be the best thing to do out there. And, you know, Abby's point, what's the best thing to try to slow traffic down? What's the best thing to try to direct pedestrians out there? You know, try to come up with that and make that part of the plan before we finalize this, before we go out to bid for it, and try to make it the best thing we can. Because I think the design of the neighborhoods that are out there were designed to be connected. Skyline Drive was not meant to be a, a dead-end forever.
Offense.
I mean, I was out there when most of those houses were built. There used to be a gravel pit at the end of one of the cul-de-sacs out there that was the best place to play in town, and it's gone, but it was fun. And, you know, that, that kind of stuff will still be out there. The farm fields still aren't developed. Thompson's Farm is still sitting empty. You know, there's a lot of land left to be developed out there, and there's a lot more connections that'll have to be made, you know, because not everybody's gonna be able to go out and, like you said, make a left-hand turn on Fabian, and it is a nightmare to try to get out on Fabian.
And I want to agree with what Alderman Barazza said. I have also heard from several residents that are in favor of this project, and I understand those reasons too. I've heard from more that are likely here tonight, but yes, I've heard from people that are in favor for the reasons of the connectivity, so.
Anybody else? Listen.
I say, won't, won't the bridge going in on Branson Drive provide a lot of that connectivity that we're discussing while still having, I guess, more balanced amenities on either side, such as sidewalks and?
You still leave these two neighborhoods separated.
Yeah.
And the idea is not to leave them separated. The idea when they were designed was to connect them.
Understood.
And to ignore that, I think, is wrong.
They aren't completely separated, though. They have, you can walk and bike between them, you just can't drive between them, and they are fairly close together, is, I guess, my one point.
Abby?
An environmental argument for the connectivity as well, to Sarah's point about having to go literally the extra mile to go anywhere if you want to go in those directions. So if there's twenty houses on either side, for instance, and maybe two drivers that leave twice a day, adding one mile to their route, three hundred, times three hundred and sixty-five, like, I'm not gonna try to do that math, but I could do that math, and just the, so the vehicle miles traveled, that number is huge. The greenhouse gas emissions that leave the cars as a result of those extra miles traveled is huge. So in, in the Greenest Region Compact and the Climate Action Plan, connectivity and these types of projects are, are a component of that.
Anybody else? I think now we're gonna take some public comment. I'd like to set a few ground rules here. Probably about three minutes is what we're gonna give people to talk. If somebody else has already said the same thing you want to say, unless you have to say it again, agree with somebody that, that's come before you. Let's keep it civil, and we'll just go through this as quickly as we can. Let's keep it civil and we'll just go through this as quickly as we can. And we only need your name for the record.
My name is Brian Shutey. So I'm one of the residents of the Spring Green subdivision. I live on Pine Needles Court, actually, so I'm well aware of kind of this project. I grew up in the area as well, so similar to Alderman Wolf, you know, have a good idea of the area and just sort of, you know, what it looks like. Since really learning of this project, all of us residents, in April, essentially, we've all sort of noticed and expressed similar concerns to one another and noticed that because we were all having the same sort of concerns, we looked at what was the best option to sort of convey that to the council and City of Batavia. We entertained the idea of forming a citizens committee. Proud to say that we've done that and have a few representatives here tonight. Will be giving a short presentation, if that's okay, to the council. One of the ideas here is because there are so many voices, and I'm sure as you guys have gotten the emails and the calls and all of that, especially the engineering, to that same effect, it was spreading the word and having invited those questions and comments, you know, people felt free to reach out to you. But to condense some of those concerns and take a few of us who are residents there of the neighborhood and really give time to researching this and looking at it, and hopefully even be liaisons to work with you as residents of the community to have meaningful discussions about it and provide information to you as well. So if there's anything that we can do to fill in the gaps, that's one of the goals of the citizens committee, make ourselves available to you. So, kind of without further ado, I'm going to introduce some of the members of the citizens committee. There are seven of us currently. So the first one I'd like to introduce, if you guys would just like to stand, kind of as I read out your names, is Ron Heine. He's a board member from the HOA of Windermere, which is the subdivision to the north. There is Bill Johnson. He's, feel free to stand, Bill. He's a resident of the Spring Green subdivision, actually my next-door neighbor, myself, Brian Shutey, Spring Green subdivision. Then we also have Greg Hussman, who is a resident of the Clover Hills subdivision, which is just west of Spring Green. Clover Hills Park was the park that, you know, you were discussing, so that's all of Clover Hills. Also Steve Christensen, another member of Clover Hills there as well. Keith McLeod, standing in the back there, Keith. He's actually a resident south of McKee, so he lives on Tyson Trail, which is a small cul-de-sac that comes off of there. There are a few homes on the south side of McKee that are also impacted by this as well. We've also reached out to Trout Farms. I was reaching out to HOA presidents. They didn't feel like they wanted to really lump in that lot in terms of having a strong stance because it's actually Sarah Vogel Singer's husband is the HOA president, so they felt there might be a conflict of interest if they were strongly opposed to it, perhaps, or one way or the other. The last member of the citizens committee is Mr. Stephen Bork, who is the Windermere HOA president, and he's the one who will be presenting to you. So let me just load this up real quick and pass it over to him.
Good evening, council members and directors. We appreciate the opportunity to speak about this. I'll try to be quick and go through this presentation and be brief, as brief as I can. So I guess we understand that the city has reasons for this project and wants to move forward with it. And although we're not sure what impact studies have been conducted in conjunction with Geneva Township, we residents have deep concerns about this project. And I guess some conversation already around some of the concerns you've all expressed indicate the need for these types of studies to be done. We've obtained signatures on a petition to stop the project from moving forward or to delay it until an adequate evaluation can be conducted. We've obtained a total of 311 signatures, oh, excuse me. So here's a map of the affected town subdivisions. They're all circled in different colors. You've seen that map already. And some close-ups of Skyline Drive, which you've seen from the engineer. Boy, this is sensitive. So the petition that we circulated represents five of the signatures from households in five of the affected subdivisions who are objecting to the project. It represents about 88% of the households contacted, and actually, 224 households that were accounted, that were contacted account for 85% of all of the households in these five subdivisions. So we feel we've got a pretty strong voice here with the petitions that have been signed. We also have 41 more signatures from folks outside of these subdivisions that are not included in this table. So you can see we've got 224 households contacted, 195 signed, and that represents 88% of the households objecting to this particular connection project. To talk a little bit about our concerns, our number-one concern is safety. This has already been expressed here a little bit. Safety for pedestrians, children, cyclists, that would dramatically affect our quality of life. Spring Green, as you've already been discussing, has no sidewalks, shoulders, streetlights, has narrow roads, and yet people have to walk in the street. One Windermere stated verbatim, "Like many families, we walk with our kids, two years old and two months old, and our dog, up and down Skyline and go over to Clover Hills Park. This project will endanger us and all pedestrians by encouraging non-residents to cut through our neighborhoods. This is a waste of funds on a project no residents support or benefit from." Our second concern is that there is, back up here, that this is inconsistent with the city's focus on bicycle and pedestrian safety. Yeah, something here. There we go. The city's connectivity plan, we understand the, oh, I'm sorry, I want to back up. On the safety issue, we understand that the Kane County Sheriff's Office also expresses safety concerns. I'd like to introduce Lieutenant Mike Bogosiewicz.
Thanks for having me. Mike Bogosiewicz, Lieutenant with the Kane County Sheriff's Office, has been sent here to voice the sheriff's office opinion about this. We agree with the committee. Extremely dangerous, about the streetlights, narrow roadways, no sidewalks, you're putting people at risk without forethought and planning. Wanted to voice that. I'll let him speak, but-
Thank you, Mike.
We agree 110%.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So to the city's connectivity plan, we understand the intent is to allow pedestrian access for community involvement, but you don't really connect communities if you just drive through them. And we feel that that's what's really going to happen here with this kind of connection made. Our biggest, one of our big concerns, of course, is the increased traffic in the subdivisions. We already have the Branson Extension with the Winding Creek coming through, which we anticipate will have some increased traffic to our neighborhoods as it is. But the thing to remember, I think, is that people bought homes, myself included, here partly because of the quiet nature and low traffic in these neighborhoods. It's kind of like living on a cul-de-sac in a way, you know, where it's just sort of quiet, peaceful, and we buy into this neighborhood for that reason. If we open up this thoroughfare between McKee and Fabian, that's not going to happen. That's going to go away. One of the people involved in this also said, "I strongly oppose this extension as there are many kids on the street. The proposed extension will bring more pass-through traffic in this peaceful neighborhood and put the kids and everyone in more risk and unpleasant living quality." So another point that we are having a concern with is we feel the project impacts the roads that are managed by Geneva Township, and as you mentioned earlier, we understand that there is legal action pending to stop this project. The infrastructure is such that the roads do not line up, as you saw, and this is going to require a lot of construction that residents really do not want. If the extension goes through, new sidewalks, shoulders, perhaps storm drainage would even be required, along with sufficient lighting and other infrastructure improvements for the safety of pedestrians. Now, if you've seen the maps there and you understand, or if you've been there, you understand the locale, really, it's going to be a very, it's almost infeasible. It's almost impossible to accomplish these things, whether you approve them or not. I don't see that there's land there that can be accessed unless, because you've got property ownership, you've got ditches, there's a lot of trees. So that's, there are some issues here in terms of this. And I guess the point being that we believe impact and budget studies need to be done before this really moves along to any real decision point by the council. So in summary, 311 residents representing 88% of the households contacted are objecting to this project. We request the council to abandon this effort or at least delay it until appropriate evaluations can be conducted, given that we've just become aware of this plan just a few weeks ago. And I will refute what the gentleman earlier said. We did not receive notices in March. We didn't receive any notice, frankly, until just about a week or two ago, when a little postcard came out, basically announcing this meeting about the connection. So there was very little notice, and we really scrambled to do a lot of work and research to put this forward to you and bring this information to you because we weren't sure how much you're aware of all these different conditions that would have to be dealt with. So I thank you for your time tonight and your consideration. Thank you.
So when we send the initial notice out, that was sent to a smaller group of people who are much closer to the project. But when we send the second notice out, which is for this discussion, we actually send it out to a bigger group so that everybody in that, on that Skyline Drive, is included. So the first one was sent to indicate that the engineering people or surveyors are going to be out there on the site so that if they have any question, concern, they can contact us. So that was not for the, meant for the project. For discussion, we have sent it to a bigger group. Just wanted to put it out.
May I comment to that, actually? While it is true that the postcard did reach further, I can speak to this personally because we have been petitioning. I would like to submit those to the mayor and the council. The coverage of the postcard isn't even exactly quite adequate for the meeting. Essentially, if, even within Spring Green, if you lived south of, if you lived south of the bridge, which is the, let me see if I can get a mouse pointer here, right here in Spring Green, if you lived to the south of that, you did not receive a postcard. If you lived anywhere in Clover Hills, you did not receive a postcard. If you live in Trout Farms, you did not receive a postcard. If you lived in Tyson Trail or south of McKee, you did not receive a postcard. What I've learned within Windermere, if you lived within this section of Windermere, which was Phase Two or Three, you likely also did not receive a postcard. So the neighborhood affected in whole really is not represented with the initial mailing. The original city letter that we received was drafted April 2nd. We didn't receive it until April 6th. So there was no official notice as residents on our end until April 6th, just to make a clarification of that. If you'd like to speak to the petition real quick?
Well, I pretty much did. The, it was 311, 311 signatures representing 88% of the households against the connection. And again, we, you know, as Brian said, we'd like, as a committee, to work with the council and help you arrive at a good decision on this project. You know, we just feel that it's been kind of rushed through, at least from our standpoint, because we just found out about this just a few weeks ago. And so we're asking for some time, some study to be done, and although our better alternative would be to abandon the project altogether. Are there any other questions or comments?
Council have any questions? None at this point.
Thank you very much.
Just wanted to address a few more quick points as clarifications. First thing as well, if you're here for the Skyline Drive connection, would you please raise your hand if you're concerned about it? So essentially, if you weren't here because you were angry that you were being annexed tonight, you were probably here for the Skyline Drive connection. I am sorry to include that to the council, that it's Angry Villager Night, but seems to be the case. Within Mr. Barry's notes in terms of, you know, notification, I did notice the discrepancy there. Also, there was a mention of widening the streets. There is a point to be made here specifically about infrastructure and what City of Batavia defines within its own street code as safety precautions. 28-feet width for streets, that's curb-to-curb, that exists within Windermere. Trout Farms will be in Winding Creek as well. And that's with sidewalks on either side and an easement made available. You know, to clarify that point, within the southern portion of Spring Green, not only are we Geneva Township, so those are things that, once again, have to be looked at intergovernmentally to work with or figure out how that is done, but our road width is only 21 to 22 feet, with less than a foot of gravel perhaps off of that. Other than that, it's open ditch. So just a quick clarification on that. The other thing that I wanted to speak to a little bit was the bike path that exists. I know that within the past few years, that has become something that Batavia is looking at funding and really developing. There is a bike path that exists between Trout Farms and Windermere. And to speak to some of the observations as well, that it isn't only vehicle traffic, it is pedestrian and cycling traffic. One of the reasons why a lot of the residents feel very strongly about this as well is there is interconnectivity for pedestrian and cycling traffic right now, and it's uninhibited. You can go through that gate freely. Plenty of residents use that loop. Walking dogs, safe travel, with only 18 residents past the bridge on the north side of Spring Green, then, you know, it's very low traffic. I have looked at the traffic numbers from around there and sort of started studying it, along with Winding Creek increasing connectivity. The other thing council should be aware of is that KDOT is currently pursuing putting a light at Wenmouth and Fabian that is budgeted, that is, as of middle of April, they are waiting for the actual equipment to put that light in, a wire light. And they have more money budgeted for that project, more than likely to increase that infrastructure, which should be finished in 2026. There are large construction projects that are currently happening that will change the infrastructure surrounding this right now. I'm not sure how impact studies are looked at or the scope of them, how often they get done, but that is certainly something that should be pursued. And an impact study even done right now would look completely different than something two years from now. So that's something to keep in mind when you're looking at the area and- So that's something to keep in mind when you're looking at the area and how it's developing even right now. So those are my comments for now. Is there anybody with any questions, anything? All right. Thank you very much.
Hello, it's Greg Johnson. You had asked a question about flooding. So since they put in this subdivision north of us, I don't know the name of it, but my backyard, my garden used to be at the bottom of it. I had to move it up, all the way to the top by my house. My asparagus patch is gone because of flooding. I can't mow my grass. So yeah, there's real concern, but then when I seen this connection in the stakes that were put out from the surveyors, I think you're going to take our drainage ditch away. I don't quite get that. Yeah, why are we going to take it? Where's that water going to go? Out my yard? Question and concern. And only one comment about the notification. I'm the second house from the dead end. I got nothing. So it must have been a really, really small amount of people. That's all I have to say. Any questions? Should say that. No?
My name's Keith McLeod. I live on Tyson Trail. And I just wanted to offer an anecdote, just to give you some context. My wife and I, and sometimes our dogs, walk on Skyline pretty much every day. And no sidewalks, of course, as we've discussed. But when a car comes, sometimes they're careful, slow down. Sometimes they're going 45, we got to get out of the way. Sometimes they get a little irritated, I'll give them a little wave, slow down. When there's two cars, delivery truck or something, they're looking at the delivery truck, they're not looking at pedestrians. So we have to actually go in the ditch. That's now with the dead end. So my perspective is, you don't really know. We're supposing that traffic's going to increase. I think most reasonable people would think traffic's going to increase dramatically. So no longer will be, feel safe walking. So from my perspective, I know I don't live in Batavia, even though I have the mailing address, and I actually have a Batavia flag, but I live in Geneva Township. It's a serious issue in quality of life to basically deprive a lot of us of a safe way to walk. So, thanks.
My name is Kathy DeYoung. My husband and I just moved here. We are not from the area. We didn't grow up in this area. We moved here from Lombard. And we are on the corner of Spring Green and Skyview Road, so we're right there. And we bought this house because it's in a beautiful area. It gives us the lifestyle we were looking for. And when you say this will not be a cut-through, it will definitely be a cut-through, because the road that we lived on in Lombard was just a small street going through the neighborhood. And because of its location and the fact that it connected two major parts of the town, it has become a major street now. And it's all residential for the majority of it. We have not only school buses and things, but, and we do have sidewalks, but the point is it's still a two-lane road with no parking on either side. In front of our house, there's a stop sign, three houses down, and in front of our house there is a line of cars all the time for that stop sign. And this is a residential street. And we have had accidents where people have driven through the stop sign and into our trees in the front yard. I have noticed since that we've lived here, we've been here since May 3rd, okay? And I can see the families that come out there and walk their children, walk their dogs and with the kids and in strollers and stuff. So it makes an impression on us. We can see what a peaceful neighborhood this is, which is part of the reason why we bought there. And to see that destroyed just because of some 2006 connectivity thing, I don't understand the point of it. I really don't. You have the bike trails, I think that would connect people, maybe there's other subdivisions that are going to be built in that area. I just don't see the point of making the connection, and it is definitely going to change, and it will become a cut-through. Pretty much guarantee it. The traffic will increase, the speeds will increase. And then the other thing, too, is with all these little subdivisions around there, just because you have one road that goes through, the minute there's any kind of construction or something on that, and they find out there's another road that you can take, Spring Green around, cut through that other subdivision, and then make a left on McKee, that's going to happen pretty soon. When they find, it's just the nature of human beings. They want to get where they want to get as fast as they possibly can, as quickly as they possibly can, and they're going to start finding all kinds of little cut-throughs through all the other neighborhoods. And so it will change. That's just my opinion, because we've experienced it. Thank you.
I want to thank you for this opportunity. My name is Hal Harms. We built our house in Spring Green subdivision in 1975, so we've been there 49 years. Thoroughly enjoyed it, raised three boys there. They all learned to ride their bicycles in the cul-de-sac that we're in, and we still get people from around the area sometimes pull in and drop off bicycles, so they can learn to ride bikes in our area, because it's, it's not a through street. But I would like to take a little description, I have a little bit different description of the 2006. 2006, we sat in the same room, my wife and I, and other people in our subdivision, and there was discussion about the new subdivision that was going to be built in our backyards. And the main issues were two. One was the interconnection, and one was the size of the homes and the lots. And as I remember, they came to a good conclusion on the size of the homes and the lots, and we were told that there was not going to be a through-street interconnection. The street was still put in, and when I asked for a reason why that street was put in up there, they didn't want to redo the drawings. And so my understanding, it was never meant to be interconnected, as opposed to maybe somebody else. Good mayor might, might remember different than I do, but that, that's my recollection of that. The other thing is, as we're talking about connectivity, that's good, but safety, I'm glad to hear is the prime issue within this group and within our group in our subdivision. If it's not going to be a busy road, why are we spending $150,000 of taxpayer dollars on something that's not needed? For the last 20 years, we've driven to the stores in the area. We've gone the way without that interconnection. And while it may be inconvenient periodically, it's something that we're used to. So from our viewpoint, we don't need the interconnection, we would prefer it not happen, mainly because of the safety, and I think you've, you've hit on it, so I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
My name is Elizabeth Bork. And my contention about the safety, what I, is that as soon as people find out they can turn in at Fabian and Skyline and cut all the way down through and get to McKee and avoid the light at Viking and Branson, the Walmart, Randall, and Mill Street, you can be darn sure that traffic is going to increase like crazy through there. So I too am very concerned about safety and the speed that people will be traveling through the area. Thank you.
My name is Ann Richards, and I think that if the stoplight is proposed and going to be put in in two years at the corner of Wenmouth and, what street is that?
Fabian.
Not Fabian, the other one. Going to Mill Creek.
Fabian.
Okay, anyway, yes, you're right, yeah. Why don't we see about just spending just enough money to make a right turn lane there? And most people wouldn't feel like they had to go another way, but there's so many times that we can sit there behind eight or 10 cars who are going home to Mill Creek, who, who keep everybody waiting forever because of all the traffic on Fabian. And I think if there was a right turn lane, it would make a huge, huge difference in the safety and the less need for a cutoff, a cut-through. So anyway, that's my ill-worded.
Hi, my name's Dave Carney. I live in Spring Green over on the Batavia side. The one thing that you guys, I think, discount is the fact that algorithms in traffic are, create traffic habits now. So if Waze says that that's a shorter route, that's where the majority of the traffic's going to travel through. Now, talking to Geneva, Mike Apps, there's no appetite for them to build that road out to be safer. There's no, no thought in their mind to be able to do that. So you're going to take $150,000 or six bucks worth of Batavia tax dollar money per household or per person, you're potentially going to get into a legal fight with Geneva, undetermined amount of legal, you know, the amount of legal fees that you're going to incur for the taxpayer for a road that, yes, you guys have said, it's not going to be that busy. Well, then what's the point of doing it? So that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name's Paula Black. I live on Spring Green Way. In fact, I live right at the, at the, where Spring Green ends and Trout Road begins. Since now Winding Creek is going in, it takes me three minutes from my house to get to the post office, three minutes. So opening up Skyline and having that connection, people are going to come through there and they're going to increase the traffic. Traffic's already increased just with the connectivity that we have between the subdivisions now. We need to be careful, and that's all I need to say. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sue Kraszewski. I live at 2660 Hansford Avenue. I'm two houses off of the Dead End Street. I'm an avid bicyclist, and I use that fence line all the time. But besides me, Batavia High School kids, cross-country team, track team, they're in our neighborhood on that bike path around, they go up to Peck Farm, and they utilize it just as well. It is imperative that you leave that road the way it is, but I would like something fixed. The ghetto fence line and the wood fence line, that all needs to go, okay? That should have been fixed 20 years ago when Windermere subdivision went into play. But it didn't, because that was the original farm line from the original farm, okay? Just fix that, take the trees out, take the wood fence out, the metal fence, put stakes in there with big red diamonds and say, you can drive through. Leave it as is. It's really a nice thing to have for several neighborhoods to be able to come through, use the bike path all the way to Peck Farm and come around. The cross-country team utilizes it, and the track team utilizes it all the time. I'm talking like 20, 30 guys coming through our neighborhood. And, and there's bicyclists from Geneva that, they're, they're, Geneva right at the river, they have a biking group that comes through our neighborhood also and utilizes it. But it's just, it's not, it's great for biking and families and kids, but just not cars. Because I see cars come on Hansford, and, and they fly around, and they don't necessarily stop at that stop sign. So, you know, just, if you could, think about it.
If you're not sick of hearing from me yet, I was reminded of two other points by some of the other residents. One was the concern, because you have the Geneva Middle School, Geneva Middle School just to the north of Fabian there, the concern also is another source of through traffic could be when school lets out. Anybody heading south, that would be straight at the light all of a sudden, and now you have a path that gets you to Wenmouth a little bit faster. Certainly, you could avoid a light, which will soon be there. The other thing of note, when kind of looking at this and sort of looking around, okay, what is the traffic pattern around here? What is safety around here? KDOT does mention that both Fabian east of Randall and extending to the west some too is a major arterial for all of Kane County, and certainly Randall Road is too. So you are talking about two very busy roads within the whole of Kane County that are adjacent to this, essentially, just to make note of that. And also on the aspect of safety as it relates to traffic, within the 2023 annual police report from City of Batavia last year, they did mention some of their top 10 crash locations. A good number of them are actually along Randall between Fabian and Wilson. And when I say a good number, it's over 50%. If you then take into account crashes that are on private property, it will include Walmart. There is also akin to that, the 2200 block of McKee, which is just west of Randall. There's the intersection between the Target and Coles and Bedding, and then there's a few more back intersections. That's actually one of, again, the top 10 crash locations for Batavia from City of Batavia Police. So just wanted to make those assertions. Thank you.
Hello, thank you for hearing from us. My name is Lorraine Reissa. I'm a resident of Spring Green Sealed Division. In fact, we were the first people out there to buy a piece of property. We built our house and moved into it in September of 1973, so we've seen many, many changes. We've loved the connection with the township, Batavia, and Geneva, and I'm glad we're keeping that connection going. I'm concerned about winter. I look at, through my windows from my house, and I see the school bus parked down at Spring Green Way and Skyline Drive. It gets really slippery out there. Somebody talked about the hills. That wind comes blowing up and down those hills. It's much better than it was 51 years ago, I must tell you. But it gets very slippery there. Oftentimes, parents bring their children in cars and line along the road so that they don't have to stand out in that wind and snow and cold. So it does decrease the width of the road and does make it more difficult and dangerous for children and the school bus. Also, I'd like to address the idea of need, and I think that has been addressed, but we do have Randall, which granted is very busy. We have Wenmouth Road, which has changed a lot since 1973, but that is a wonderful road to go, and when they get the stoplight there, that'll be absolutely wonderful. We now also have Branson, which will go all the way through, including to the Geneva Junior High, sorry. So I don't really see the need for another going a way through to Fabian Parkway. That gives us three, Rantle, Branton, and Wenmouth, and I do think that's enough. It doesn't take me much time at all to get to the stores or to get to, I go to Peck Farm a lot, it does not take me long to get to Peck Farm, my favorite place, or Walmart, or, or any of the advocate facilities over there on, on, on Fabian Parkway. So I don't really think that there is a need. I think the cost-benefit ratio is way off, because I don't think the benefit would come near the cost. Okay? Thank you for listening to me. Goodbye.
Rachel Daly. I live on McKee. I'm not part of this immediate neighborhood, but I use the neighborhood often to exercise, to walk, my dog, to run, to bike. I have two questions. Well, one question and one consideration, I suppose. Sir, you presented earlier, in your presentation, there is a notation of enhanced EMS response times. Is that something that's been studied?
Is that something being studied?
Did you, was, was there a consideration, a review of what the current response times are in the immediate neighborhoods that would be infected by this change?
No, we haven't done any particular study like that, but just from, just listening to, like, you know, people are taking Branson, that's a connection, and it's taking less time for people to reach their destination. So you can tell anecdotally- time for people to reach their destination. So you can tell anecdotally from those presentations, those discussions, that when you have a connection, it's going to take you less time, whether it's police, fire, or emergency vehicles, or any other vehicles that, that wants to reach to a destination.
So there's an assumption, but not a study?
Well, if the emergency vehicles are coming from the north and the emergency is on the southern portion of Skyline Drive that is blocked from the north, that vehicle needs to travel further south in order to then come up.
With the assumption that they would go through the neighborhood and not around?
If they need to get on Skyline Drive to the south side of where it's blocked, then they would have to take some route south of there in order to come back up into the subdivision.
Right. So are you asserting that it was reviewed and considered, or that we're just making assumptions?
The fire chief was asked to weigh in as to whether the connection would help response times.
Very good. Thank you. I appreciate that. Are our response times within what is considered normal?
Yes.
So there's not currently an issue with response times in this immediate neighborhood?
Anytime you can reduce response times is preferable.
That's fair. There was a comment, and I apologize with the poll, I don't know who made it, but there was a comment earlier from the Council upon carbon emissions being reduced by the connectivity. Can I get a show of hands from our citizens to say who would no longer exercise in the immediate neighborhood and would be driving somewhere else to go walk or bike or work Every day? It's definitely a fair point, but I think my point is, there's more math to be done if we actually think we're going to reduce carbon emissions by connecting this neighborhood.
Wasn't going to talk. Dave Kettleson, I might be the reason you guys are here. I live at the very end of Skyline Drive. My, I know where that quarry is. It's behind my house that you swam at. And my dog probably barks at you guys every time you go by. Just a couple of things. I, Mike Apps was out at, outside my house and I asked him what he was doing. And he had painted lines down the street that said, he's going to look into having another fence put up there. So I didn't know if you guys are aware of that or not, but that's $150,000 for 200 feet of road. And then, I don't know if there's just going to be like, keep adding on road or keep annexing or something like that, if that was the plan. And I think it says a lot that, I'm former law enforcement too, and been to a lot of fatal accidents myself. And I think it says a lot that the LT from Kane County Sheriff's Office came here and said that it's not safe. And I agree with that. Thank you. I like that fence. I don't think it's gonna, sorry.
Just to clarify with the president, or the presence of Kane County Sheriff, I had reached out to them for comment if they knew about this at all or had had any past concerns about this. They hadn't had any issues with EMS response time, any police response times with this. As I understand, it's kind of whoever's available first come first served. So we will give Batavia Police, who respond in Spring Green, if they're first available, to some sort of call. When reaching out to Kane County Sheriffs about this, I was put in touch with Public Safety Commander David Wolfe. Unfortunately, he couldn't be here tonight, and that's why we got Lieutenant Mike instead. So there is, you know, more of a hierarchy that, that understands this within the Sheriff's Department. So, thank
Good evening. I'm Debbie Garrison. It warms my heart to see so many people in the surrounding subdivisions come here tonight and voice their concerns. I live on Skyline Drive. We moved out there 40 years ago. And the reason we did is why so many others have say, said the same thing. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. It's beautiful. There's trees, there's hills, there's wildlife. We have deer, sandhill cranes, all kinds of critters running around. That's going to go away. It's a beautiful area. And how do we know that? Not just our own opinion. There are all kinds of people that drive out from Batavia, park their cars, and walk up and down our roads, or cycle out and cycle up and down the roads. We just really hate to see the beauty of that destroyed just to tick off a checklist. I also agree with what Brian and several other people have said. We really should look at this more than just connecting two ends of a road. What will the impact be? What problems might it cause? We've had EMS out to our house a number of times through the years. They're there in moments. I really don't see that changing. So please really consider before making this decision. Thank you.
For more people that haven't talked yet, so I'm, I'm just going to try to conclude real quick. You wanted this connection to bring connectivity to the community. Well, you've done that. You've got all of these people who were connected now. And thank Brian, who was instrumental in pulling us all together in a very short period of time. If we could get more agencies to work the way we've done, we'd all be better off. You've heard that, you've heard the survey results or the petition results. You've got an overwhelming number of residents who are the ones directly impacted by this, who are against it. Not just Geneva Township, those people who do not vote for you as alderman, but the bulk of them, the most, majority of them are Batavia citizen residents who are voting for you guys. They don't want this. They're the ones that could mostly benefit from it. They don't want it. It's a safety issue, paramount. Increased traffic is increased risk of citizen injury. And as, as we've said, as Steve said and Brian said, we're recommending that the project be shelved, at best. In worst case, delay it. Do the, do the impact studies that should be done on something like this. This is a small project in the Grants Community and it's $150,000. Don't, it's going to be more than that, you know that. Don't let it become something much, much bigger. Because that's what will happen if somebody gets injured. Okay? Anybody else want to say anything?
I think we've heard loud and clear tonight, you know, your, your thoughts as residents and your concerns. And I think a few of us on the council have raised concerns as well with safety issues. I guess some of it also is the lack of communication that we've had as council members with counterparts on the Geneva Township. I think we have to have definitely more discussion about this and we have to have more answers before we make any kind of decision. So I, I think the group of you that galvanized together pretty much immediately achieved, I think, what you wanted. I don't know that anybody sitting up here is ready to vote on anything tonight or in the near future. So this is going to be something we're going to have to go back and, and look at again.
Is there any direction for staff or actions to take at this time?
I would like to see us have a meeting or have staff have meetings that maybe a few of us as aldermen could be present at with the Geneva Township representative.
We can. Realize that they are absolutely opposed to this. And one gentleman even brought up that Mike Apps has said that he will put a fence on the township side should we move forward with this project. So, yeah. And then any suggestions for additional infrastructure on their side, they said from the township perspective, because of the cost of future maintenance, they are not interested in that either.
I mean, I, I heard a lot about the concern about safety and, but nothing was like definite. There, there's that, that fear. And so I guess the question would be is to maybe have a conversation with also Kane County, bring them in to get some of what their opinion is.
And they have longer ranging plans than we do or Geneva Township does. Or anybody else in their, you know, 2020, 2030, 2040 plans on where they think their roads are going, the ones they control?
Is that road that is under Kane County jurisdiction, or is it under the township jurisdiction?
Skyline is township. I think Jen's probably bringing up like Fabian or...
But I mean, from the safety standpoint, since it's Kane County that would, you know, patrol that area?
I don't know that they do. I think the township controls that area.
Who patrols it though for speed and everything if there's that, you know, who, who, if, if it were to open up, whose responsibility would it be to, you know, patrol that for that speed? Because that would be the thing that would come, you know, anytime you open up a road of, who's going to patrol? Everybody says, somebody's speeding past my house. We need somebody to come out to patrol.
So we did have the lieutenant here who was from Kane County Sheriff's Public Protection Office. Is there someone else from the sheriff's office or, because they're the ones who would be enforcing things out there.
I don't know if maybe Chief Maza has a counterpart over there to have that conversation with.
It would be the sheriff himself.
I think that to get, not only from them bringing their side, but also going to them and speaking to them.
So ask Sheriff Hane to weigh in on it, the, the safety of it. Okay. Any other actions that you're wanting staff to take at this time?
I mean, is it out of realm to do an impact study for the potential of what traffic may go there, especially knowing that there's going to be a light that's going to be put on Wenmuth? I mean, what I hear and what I see is that traffic that backs up on Wenmuth are the people that are trying to go to Mill Creek and not people who are really trying to get to the neighborhood. And that is where the traffic comes up. I think that this connection would help those residents that live in the northern part of the neighborhood to get home quicker. I don't see it as a see-through, but, you know, I'm not a traffic expert. So I, I don't know if any other aldermen feel the same way about a traffic study or the impact that this would have.
I do.
I mean, I've already expressed that I don't think that this is, just because that the, the old wooden gate and the trees are taken down and the road's connected, it's going to suddenly become the thoroughfare. Because like I said, I've been in this town since 1976 and I just don't see it. I mean, people are going to use the main roads. They're not going to, you have to zig and zag to get even through there. And I mean...
Chris, I, I...
No talking in the audience, please.
I agree with you, but I, some of what we've heard, you know, if we need to be able to justify our reason for doing this, I think that is something that we need to do. We need to be able to present. We, we could all sit here and that's all we saw tonight. That's all we heard was, this is my feel. So, you know, we now need to be able to provide proof to say, this is our justification for doing it. If we're able to justify it to the residents and say, we've had experts to do this, then I think we'll be able to, be able to buy a little bit more people than the 88% that are opposed. If we have some data that we can present to them on this is why we're doing it.
So what type of study would you be proposing then? Because I'm not quite sure, I'm not quite sure what you're asking about. Because I mean, I don't have any problem with it. I'm just not sure exactly what amorphous study you want, you would propose to have done. I don't know if Rahat can weigh in on this in terms of what his thoughts are, but I don't have any problem with getting data.
No, like an impact study. That's what I've heard multiple times, an impact study with...
I don't know what that is though. I don't know how that's done.
Of traffic. Could, is there that potential? Is there a study out there that could say, if this opens up, this is the potential of traffic that you may get? I can tell you, I drove out there. I drove past Skyline and had to go down the other way just to go see from the south side where it was. But again, you know, and I was looking for it, but I missed it. And I even had my GPS.
Yes, yeah.
But there has to be something out there that we'll be able to study to present.
I would recommend if, if, if the majority of council wants to do that, that we take an incremental approach. First, meet with the township officials, first meet with the county sheriff, have any other meetings that we would like to have first, then decide if we want to take the next steps. The traffic study is going to be a $25,000, $30,000 proposition. And yes, you can study, you could study the whole quadrant that Rahat pointed out in the first place, Wenmuth, Fabian, and, and that's what traffic engineers do, is, is they, they, they make those projections and they do those studies and they conduct those traffic counts. It's a matter of city council deciding, do you want to expend $25,000, $30,000?
The result will be that when you make the connection, traffic will increase. And I think what you've heard today is that 88% of the people are not going to be in favor of this project if it means that it increases traffic over what it is today. I, I'm not sure that a traffic study, an impact study, is going to change people's minds.
And if we're going to do that, I would say, since the township is so opposed to it, I wouldn't want to be footing the whole bill for that. I mean, that would be something they would have to be willing to also contribute towards, which I highly doubt they would.
Would, yeah. I don't think they would.
Sarah?
I would be in favor of starting with an intergovernmental, like a conversation, definitely with the township. But before I were to vote on it, I would want to see an intergovernmental agreement that everybody is on board and we're going to do this right. So.
And it's okay that when I come back to you and I say, they were not interested, that that, that might be the end of it.
They have litigation done yet. It's good. The appeal is going to be dismissed, but I don't even think the PLA is going to be accepted. That's my opinion, but.
Mark?
My opinion is to drop the whole thing. And part of the reason is, one, if Geneva Township says they're just going to put up a fence on their road, then we just, we're just throwing money away. So it seems kind of silly. And then that would just create more lawsuits. Like, are we going to sue them back? I don't know. But several weeks ago, this room was filled just about like this, with residents asking for council to sign a resolution for a ceasefire. And a lot of people on this council said, want to listen to our residents, and voted in favor of that because residents spoke out about something that concerned them. Some of our residents here are speaking about something that concerns them, and I choose not to ignore them on this vote. So I think it should just be dropped because they don't want it. They've got a lot of evidence. We know that traffic will increase. Even if it increases by 10 cars a day, traffic will increase. There's, nobody here is going to deny that. And if they're denying that, they're lying to themselves. So just drop it.
I would, I would just like to point out, I don't, I don't disagree with your stance on this particular topic, but I think making an analogy to that other topic is completely, completely off base.
It's listening to residents.
They, half the people that were here for that were not residents, admittedly.
Most of the people here are non-residents too.
Right. So I mean, saying, I mean, I, I just don't, I think that you're walking a fine line by trying to say that this is the same as what was discussed at that last situation.
I'm just talking about listening to residents.
Leah?
I would be in support of having the conversations, again, with Geneva Township, with the Sheriff's, Sheriff's Department, just making sure that we understand exactly what they're saying and they know exactly what we're saying. If we do feel like this is going to be a wasted effort, then I would suggest that we put it on the back burner and wait at least until maybe that property to the west is developed in the near future or the far future. And then maybe this conversation can happen again at that point when there's more development, where there's a light at Wenmuth and Fabian. I don't see the, necessarily the purpose in pushing this forward at this point, especially if Geneva Township is adamantly against it. I think that just sounds messy. So.
Another gate to have to try to get rid of.
Yeah, another, another gate situation. Yeah. No, I, I think that's, I think it's what, what Alderman Lehman said is a reasonable approach. what, what Alderman Lehman said is a reasonable approach.
Right. And honestly, it's, it's just connectivity in a different way because it's just not in the neighborhood that is in front of us, you know, and it'll just end up going through somebody else's neighborhood on Branson or on Winmouth. That, that's the reality.
Yeah, as soon as they build a bridge, it's going to go that way. Your Honor. And those people will be unhappy.
Yeah. As you all know, I've been here a long time, 44 years. And when I was first elected, this was, this, south of this point that we're talking about was the subdivision that's there now was being built without the sidewalk, without the curb and gutter, not in the city. When you dial 911 to this day, they are in the fire protection district, so Batavia responds automatically. They're not in the police coverage area. And so there has to be a conversation going on then with Kane County about, you know, do you have somebody in someplace nearby that you can send? And if they don't, then if Batavia's got a car free, we may go out there as a backup to Kane County, but that's the way they get police protection. They don't get any guaranteed city police protection. So that's one of the negatives of it. So I, we had, there's nobody on the council anymore that was in these conversations, but we looked at that situation out there and said, this is kind of not a good way to be doing business from a city perspective. So from that point on, everything that kind of got built out in the Randall Road Corridor, I'll call it, all got annexed into the city. All got curb and gutter, all got street lights, all got the proper sized lots. And they got all the city services, the street sweeping, the snow piling, the fire, the police, the whole bit. And everybody understood that. And so we've never really promoted that. We've had some people come in over the years and ask about building something unincorporated. And we really have talked that down. And our community development department does an excellent job now in, in defending that idea because I think we cite this area as one that it's not quite working the way we think it should work. So I don't really think this is a good idea that we agree to this because if you go north of this intersection, I'll call it the intersection, you got curb and gutter and you got all the city services. You go south of it, you got come see, come sa there. And obviously the folks that live there don't want to be in the city and have this issues of which they've cited. So as far as I'm concerned, we can just pack it up and say goodbye to it. I don't think that we should go any further with this thing, given the contention we hear from the residents. But I would tell you that, you know, that's something out there someday that people are going to have to probably deal with because, you know, you got the water issues, the, the, you know, the whole thing about where you're going to put your garbage and who's going to be the garbage man and where the street lights are and who's piling the, the snow and the whole bit. Now, the townships do a pretty good job, but I think there's a quite a bit of difference between them and the city. And of course, tonight here, I think it's quite evident that, you know, we've been very good to listen to these folks. I have no problem that we did, but they're not a, most of these folks are not a constituent of anybody on this city council. Alderman Vogel said, well, there's, there's a couple of you, but Alderman Vogel, Vogel, Alderman Vogelsinger lives right next to you out there. So she's right on the, on the turf, but she's in the city. So this, this is kind of a sticky wigget, I guess I'll call it, where you got the situation where people have the rights, but they don't really have the authority to do stuff. So it, it's a problematic thing. So I'm not sure we're gaining anything. We've wasted a lot of time tonight here having this conversation. It's probably good we did, but I, I'm not convinced after listening to it that we should go any further with this.
I think at this point, we're just going to end this one because I think we're not going anywhere with it for right now. I think we'll have staff attempt to contact the.
The sheriff and.
The sheriff, township.
Township.
And see where that goes. And then we'll make a decision if we go any further at that point, if we have info from those meetings. Okay. All right.
I had one more thing I wanted to add just from a citizens committee perspective. We are very vested in this and representing the neighborhood as a whole. If you have any questions or, you know, we've been digging and looking into this, you mentioned talking to KDOT and finding if they have people who are looking at this road from the cursory glance that I did, they really do not. I reached out to them. They don't, it's a very small road. The closest thing I could find for quick data, IDOT does have an annual average daily traffic rate. You can actually find that updated. I believe it's updated once a month. They do actually have an annual average daily traffic rate for Skyline Drive on the southern portion in Spring Green, if you can believe it. And it's 250 cars a day, which is 10 to 11 cars an hour. That's an average. So it'll be plus or minus. You look at the roads around it, Winmouth, for example, north, south, very close by, this month, it's over 5,000 cars. So it's, you do the math on it, it's about 20 times more. That's, that's an illustrative example, but there you go. So just once again, the citizens committee would just like to make themselves available to anybody on the council if they're interested in talking about this more or learning anything we've just sort of been digging and researching. So we're a wealth of information. We're at your disposal. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, now we move on to item number 11, which is a discussion on First and Water Street intersection.
Yes.
Who's going to start that off?
Gary, were you going to initiate the talk about, or Rahat?
Interesting for the good part. We'll take a, a quick break here and just wait for the room to clear here. We'll be getting to the next discussion.
I just waited a few seconds.
Yeah.
So council has talked about the First and Water Street intersection and the First Street west of Water Street between Water and Batavia Avenue. So engineering has looked at different options and wanted to bring this to your discussion so that you can decide and give direction on which way you want to go with this. So I, I just like the other presentation, just showing you what the street looks like. This is the First Street at the Water Street intersection, looking west. You can see a pretty uphill going to Batavia Avenue. The next one is standing on 31, looking east. You can see the slope going down. You can see the fun on a snowy, icy day, driving down the car. And then here is some info about the intersection of First Street and Water Street. This is from the police department. They pulled the data, crash history data from last 12 years. You can see that there was like one accident set that intersection in 2014, one in 2015, one in 2019, 2022, two, 2024, one. So five crashes versus cars, so car versus car crashes. One was a car versus bicyclist. So just wanted to put it out there so that you can see what the crash history is for that intersection. With that, what we think that maybe council would like to implement tomorrow is that road closed sign at the, and this, as I said, council would like to implement tomorrow is the road closed sign eastbound at, at Batavia Avenue and First, First Street. And so that will require a no right turn on Batavia Avenue. And I'm highlighting that, that this is the no right turn so that people know in advance that they are not supposed to turn right. And there will be a no left turn right around here somewhere so that people know that they are not supposed to make a left turn here. And coming out of the pub, public library lot, you will need a right turn only. So people are just going to travel west rather than going east. There'll be a one-way sign here. So if you are traveling north on Water Street, you will see a one-way sign. We'll probably need more than one, but I'm just showing that one, one-way sign, one-way sign. So people coming down here, they will just go this way. Anybody traveling west, they will just continue traveling west. And then anybody coming south, they will see the one-way sign and they will just turn right. They don't need to know that it's a one-way. So this is, this is, I, again, I think the council would like to implement tomorrow. The only problem with this plan is you need two signs and you are closing road, road at the 31 and First Street. 31 is the IDOT road. We almost went through the same exercise at River and Wilson. And you probably know that how long it took. Took us a year and a half to get a permit through. So if you want to just put these two signs and the road closed sign, it's going to take you a long time. We can try. We can go to IDOT and say, this is what we want to do tomorrow, but we went through the same exercise.
Rahat had come up with an idea where the road closed sign would be just east of the.
So that's my next slide.
Library entrance, like this. But it will take a while for people to learn that they shouldn't have turned east on First Street and it will force them into the library lot to turn around. And while cars, maybe that wouldn't be so bad, but you've got a lot of truck traffic that's coming down First Street there to go to the buildings that we can see right there.
Rahat said several times that city council wants to implement this, implement this tomorrow. I don't know where that came from because.
They're not there yet?
I don't want, I don't think this is a good idea at all. We have barely any access to get across this town. So we've just been talking about safety forever, right? So you want to block off this street right here. That's going to leave Wilson. You're going to have Houston, then you're going to shoot them down to the quarry. And they're going to be coming down, they're going to be coming down that street to get across town to the quarry. I mean, I don't know how you can shut down one of the main roads to get across town. You can't shut this road down. It's not, it's not feasible. That's my opinion and I'm going to vote absolutely no on anything that says we're going to shut that down so you cannot go eastbound on First Street from Wilson.
I'm in complete agreement.
I'll, I'll third that. I, I just, I don't know what benefit I see coming out of going one way on that street. I, I just don't see it at all.
So this is, this is the ultimate, what, if you want to say, what the benefit will look like. So what will happen is that we can go to IDOT, get the permits. Somehow the signs are missing here. No right turn, no left turn. Then you extend the curb. We talk about curb extension and all that. We can extend the curb, make sure that nobody is going into the one-way. We'll put do not enter sign. And then you can have parking along the closed section of that was, sorry, eastbound. And then you can have stop sign at this intersections. And then you can take out the BEI sign over here, put in sidewalk. And we have planned how we are going to route the water. And then you can have a crossing over here, pedestrian crossing. If you want, it, you can go even more broad. You could have a plaza over here, make a connection to the, and that's something that I think council looked at a long time back. There is a plaza that connects to the Batavia Library. So this could be the ultimate improvement, but that improvement will take a long time. It's, it's going to take engineering, it's going to take IDOT permits and all that. But this is something that Laura just talked about could be implemented without going to IDOT, could be implemented fast. It has, if you are at a Sinop Batavia, you'll probably go to that, make a right turn and go into the Batavia Library a couple of times. Then you'll learn that the road is closed and you will not do that again. It's, it's, I'm not taking a position, but I'm just saying it's like if you are traveling down on River Street, right? You know that it's closed. Now you know that it's closed like Thursday to Sunday. So you don't even make an attempt to go there, right? So it, it takes a few tries, but it, it can be implemented.
What Alderman Sulfah was saying is also valid because there are a lot of folks who when heading northbound on Route 31, use that to go over to Shumway in order to get onto Wilson Street. And so you will be forcing more people north and making the right-hand turn from Batavia Avenue to eastbound on Wilson Street.
We already get people up from turning west.
Or you're going to force them down Main Street.
Main Street, yeah.
To get to Water Street. And then Water Street will see all that extra traffic.
Or you're going to force them down one block more and they're just going to be going down right to the entrance of the quarry where everybody's walking or we're trying to make that intersection safe.
Has anybody talked to the library and got their currents?
No.
I have.
We have not yet.
It'll be an interesting conversation.
I agree with what everybody's saying here. I really appreciate staff like doing some research and trying to figure out how to help make this safer. And I think there's some other really good ideas we can talk about tonight about specifically about that intersection, about traffic calming and visibility and making it pedestrian, more awareness. But I mean, anybody who's been around a while know that Alderman Sulfah and I don't always agree on things, but I do agree tonight.
I'm going to note that.
Yeah. That.
Write that down, yes.
Noted. That I, I really, I, I do see this as being a complete nightmare, especially in the morning and afternoon school traffic when people are trying to get across town. Like, there's already traffic backed up or backed down, I guess, 31 from, and then, you know, up Wilson, when the high school gets out. And then it, it would just, I think it would cause a lot of traffic issues if we closed.
One of the recommendations that had been presented to city council before, this was the only one that the Batavia Active Transportation Advisory Commission suggested as feasible.
I was at that meeting. They also liked the curb out, the bump outs. And they said that when they came to city council and presented to us.
Well, the bump out is part of it. Oh, the bump outs on the corners?
The curb extensions, yes.
I don't, I, okay, I'll have to look back at Steve's email to me.
So, yeah, I mean, I have a couple of slides on that. Like if you look at how a fire truck will turn, you can see that none of the corners make it right now. So if you are on a fire truck and you are traveling north on Water Street and you want to go east, you have to go into the like oncoming traffic. So four-way stop makes sense at that corner so that people stop and they go and fire truck can make its turn or, or a big semi truck can make its turn.
Is there a reason we aren't talking about the four-way stop? Or was that, did that come up before I came on?
Why we aren't talking about a four-way stop? Because of the grade of the hill in the wintertime, there's the danger that someone would slide into the intersection.
Going downhill.
Yeah. Yeah, I take that way every day.
Just also wanted to reiterate that I completely agree. I don't, I don't see the need to restrict traffic going back and forth across town. I just want it to slow down. And this intersection in particular needs pedestrian infrastructure and it needs the cars to slow down. So I think that we should focus on those two things. I'm confused about your comment about the, about the fire trucks because certainly the, the intersection in my neighborhood, fire trucks get around and they are not nearly as wide as any of those turn radiuses, radii. So I, I want to investigate that a little further and, and I want to revisit the conversation about closing up those corners and making very visible sidewalks and crosswalks to, to bring some visibility to those businesses, to create a comfortable environment for pedestrians. Right now, like that is a, that is a hostile environment to be on foot or on bike. And I know that there haven't been incidences that we can speak to to say that that is a high priority intersection as a result of incidences. But all of us have anecdotes. All of us have experienced close calls there. And, and we should just believe people too, I guess, when they say, this would be more comfortable if X, Y, and Z. And, and this could be an area that is, that continues to grow in terms of our retail outlets and the little art hub that is being created there. And that's something I think we need to foster. and the little art hub that is being created there. And that's something I think we need to foster.
Hold on, Chris. Mark's next.
Sorry, go ahead. Thanks for trying to be creative. Appreciate that. Also, expensive but other ideas to think about. I mean, I think we need to talk to the library because that corner down there, they've never really done anything with it. And I think that they were supposed to do something with it, but I just don't know. I, I kinda compare this a little bit to Fabian and 31 where it's like this offset thing. And what can we do to maybe straighten it out a little bit more? Do we, can we talk to the library about acquiring some of their property? We've talked about downtown parking garages and different things that we should treat it, the intersection we need to do something, but we could treat it as something bigger. You know, maybe we do something to calm traffic down. But then thinking of that corner, thinking of being able to drive more people down there, no pun intended on the drive, when people are looking for a place to park, that they can park there and then have easy access to some of those burgeoning businesses that are in that area. If we start thinking beyond just the intersection itself and think of that area and, and it as a greater piece of downtown.
To your point, I think when you see the ultimate downtown plan, that the, the block south of the library, you will see as identified as a prime area for future development. And when that happens, might be a perfect time to implement some changes that could make this more, more safe and more attractive.
Well, I know there was some talk about maybe even like, you know, the parking garage area to Alderman Uwe's point. And then, you know, in terms of something, if you wanna make it immediate, which is not gonna totally be kinda like crazy with changing traffic around, I thought we did talk about like painting the intersections. I mean, that's something fast and easy.
So I found the, the email and it said, number one best, convert to the one-way. Number two, better reduce distance pedestrians and cyclists must travel by strategic use of both paint and bollards.
I mean, 'cause I don't know about necessarily, we talked about that before. And I didn't, you know, didn't really know how the bump outs would work too well. But, I mean, I think everybody was kind of in agreement, go ahead and paint it, make it nice and visible, you know, I mean.
I was down there last Friday night and just standing out there waiting to get the lobster sandwich. And watching people try to traverse that intersection from different corners was really interesting to watch how people tried to do it and how they tried to watch out, especially the cars coming down the hill, to try to dodge what was going on out there. Because a lot of people just don't realize what that intersection is like because it comes up so quick as you come down that hill. And to see people try to manage that or try to figure out what to do out there, how they came across, was almost frightening.
That's why I think it'd be real good if you, you know, in terms of directing, if you're painting and you're painting a cross east-west, and then you paint the other crosswalk at the eastern, at the eastern edge, and you'd make it so that it doesn't look inviting on the, you know, the western edge of that.
And it almost has to be an obnoxious color so that way everybody realizes it's there.
You direct them to there.
And you have direction with it, you know, something, something that really stands out. I guess maybe I shouldn't have used it obnoxious, but it should be something that really stands out so that way it's a simple, easy thing to do. And then we have to really wait until that block, that area gets redeveloped. I mean, it's, it's come up again, we've talked about it for the whole time I've been on the council, of what do we do with Water Street between First Street and Wilson? The, the west side of the street. I don't think anybody really knows how bad, how deep, how big the bedrock is in there, how much it would cost to even put a sidewalk down that side. I mean, that's been the same way since I was six years old when I moved to this town. It literally, I think, looks the same way. We might have done the curb one time.
You know, in the meantime, from what you just said, we've had some nice things happening there. I mean, the art studio, which I was there with you on Friday night and saw all the things that are happening there. And then we've got a couple of what I would describe as really promising vibrant businesses there right next to the art studio. And they seem to have traffic and they got people coming in and that's kinda making that street into a, so now we got people on the other side of the street talking to me about things they would like to do on the north side of, of First Street going down toward the rest of the area. So there's, there's a lot of interest in what we're doing here. And I just don't want us to fly off here with some easy decision, which at the end comes back and backfires us and, and causes our new businesses to have a problem.
Right. I, I would like to keep as much connectivity as we can down there, as much traffic as we can, but also figure out how to make that coexist with the pedestrian traffic. Because the pedestrian traffic is a big deal on second Fridays. I mean, it really is packed down there. I've been down for a few of them and it's been quite nice to see.
Well attended.
Go ahead.
I just kinda wanted to point out with, with these comments that everything that was presented here were temporary, you know, setups to test the outcome and impact. I mean, it's very well possible it could create significant traffic problems, but I don't know if that's a hundred percent guaranteed. It's a complex adaptive system. Theoretically, I'm gonna throw it out there. I, I'd argue it might even increase throughput on Wilson Street because now you have fewer people turning on that intersection constantly. So you have fewer like light cycles you have to deal with. And, and I can't say that with any
You just moved here and haven't had the discussion about a single bridge in the town and the problems of these situations. I mean, that could be, it would be a nightmare getting across Wilson Street if you're not gonna allow people to go down first.
How come?
How come?
Because they don't get to meter through the light at Shumway. I do it all the time when I go to the east side. I very rarely, if ever, go to 31 and Wilson to go down there. I turn right here at the light because I know I can get out and I only have to wait one light cycle to get through there because there's only three cars or cars that can back up there.
I'm suggesting that's what makes Wilson worse because everybody's doing that. So now you have constant merging and turning there.
Because Wilson's the main thoroughfare and it gets backed up at the main times of the day all the time real bad.
Just tend to put backing traffic on, at Wilson and 31 and it'll back all the way up to First Street or further.
Unless you can get a second bridge put in.
Can I just also make a comment that I think, starting this summer even, we will see some additional traffic there, especially with pedestrian and bicyclists being that the bike path is now closed and is permanently closed. So all the people who would go down by the food pantry by that bike path are now gonna be coming through this intersection. As soon as that quarry opens in two weeks, all the kids who would go from McDonald's to the quarry and quarry to McDonald's back and forth will now be using this intersection. So we will have all those middle schoolers, I'm talking like fifth grade through ninth graders, coming through here and on their bikes. And so, yes, we need to think long-term with the downtown plan. I'm really excited about the opportunities with that. But we really need to think about what is happening this summer for safety.
And even through this last winter and into the spring, the traffic, because I have somebody that I know well that lives on Water Street, there is a ton of bike traffic that ignores every sign we have put out there and continually uses that as the bike path.
And the children will too.
Yep.
And so a couple more thoughts. Also, with all the great businesses that are opening down here, Kiss the Sky, Hearth and Hammer, we have a lot of people coming from out of town, the Granology. When you are townies like us, we know what to expect from this intersection. We know to look out for pedestrians. I, my friend who lives in Indiana was visiting me a couple of months ago and she was driving. And we were coming down to Hearth and Hammer and she came flying down that hill. And I told her, I'm like, slow down. Like, I, I told my best friend, I was like, slow down. Like, this is a pedestrian area. But she didn't know what to expect, you know, she's from out of town. So we have to expect that everybody who's coming down here is, they, they don't know what they're doing. So they're, they, we need to set up better guidelines. There's no crosswalks right here right now indicated. And I know like getting those painted as soon as possible. I mean, if we need to go out there and do it ourselves, let's do that. We need to have signage coming down the hill, like just to make people aware of like, you know, pedestrian crosswalks ahead or, okay, there's that very faint one, but anything we can do to just bring awareness that this is just heads-up driving, I just think we need to, to get done.
Sure.
I agree. We should have a sign when people are starting to go down that hill. Flashing sign would be amazing. But then I wanna go back to Abby's drawings that she presented, I don't know how long ago that was, but with, I think that it was bright colors on the ground, possibly green, modeled after what Chicago has, and then the posts. And that would be, I believe, a cheap solution to do for now. And then if that does, with the downtown plan and that land turn into something wonderful and that whole area changes structurally anyway in the future, we haven't spent a lot of money on a solution, but we have increased the safety, let people know about pedestrians so that they aren't traveling too fast and decrease that distance that cyclists and pedestrians have to traverse.
Yeah, I was gonna say the exact same thing. This is not, that would not be a permanent solution. Ideally, it is something more like what you were showing where we're doing improvements, curb and gutter down First Street to slow people down as they're going down the hill, that we're directing the stormwater away from the dock, that we are implementing more of an ADA situation there. But I don't know what we're waiting for to do that necessarily. I know it's maybe with the development, maybe with more TIF money. I don't know what we're waiting for. Maybe we just budget for that in the future. But right now, tomorrow, we could make these improvements. We could make it more comfortable. And I think we should.
Gary?
The Google Street View isn't a good representation because the north leg of the intersection doesn't show the crosswalk that's out there.
Yeah, it's, it's 2018, that's why.
The, the, so that what we can do tomorrow is take the west leg, which he's looking south, so it's opposite of what you would think. If you look north, yes, there's the west leg, and you take the north leg, which isn't shown on there. Those could be made into high-visibility crosswalks, which is basically the big 12-inch wide ladder style crosswalks. I mean, Rahad already ran the turning templates to show you what, what happens with a fire truck through the intersection. So if council wants to make that intersection tighter or reduce those radii, it, it just is gonna lead to functional issues in that intersection. And you gotta decide functional issues versus the pedestrian issues. Painting green or painting colors, we go round and bout on this. And, and that's a council, ultimately a policy decision if you want to go away from the MUTCD. Because that is not in compliance with the MUTCD. But if council wants to do it, actually, I was gonna say, we still have an attorney who can advise you as to, as to what you, what you would like to do when you go away from the MUTCD. But the thing we can do tomorrow is the high-visibility crosswalks. That's the one thing that can be done. The ultimate plan that Rahad showed, yeah, and, and Alderman Beck alluded to it, we need to address the stormwater issue, which if you wanna rebuild the road, that's certainly a possibility. You'd have to raise the whole south curb line to push all the water to the north side or eventually address the loading dock issue. So that's what's been sitting out there for that, for years. That the only way you're gonna get the south and the east crosswalks in is to address the drainage issue.
Is that the topography out there is just messed up.
Yeah, it'll send the water into the ADA depression on the curb and then that water just rolls right down to the dock door.
Abby?
I sent around the emails that I received from the Metropolitan Planning Council, CMAP, former state rep Steve Anderson, who else was on that list, Active Transportation Alliance, about the liability issues being a non-issue that MUTCD regulates traffic control devices, that roadway murals and bump outs are not, roadway mural specifically, another street painting that's not in a crosswalk is not considered a traffic control device and therefore not regulated by the MUTCD. And all the examples that are around the country of these things improving safety, there's lots of studies out there. We all have access to Google Scholar. I recommend doing a search to find peer-reviewed studies about these types of interventions and their ability to improve study. I'm looking for the ones that say that it makes it more dangerous and it creates a liability. I'm, I'm actively looking for those studies to make sure that we're not opening ourselves up to something. And I have not turned up anything.
So with the most recent changes to MUTCD, they were considering whether or not they would allow the painted crosswalk. And they determined at this time, they want to wait to see if, you know, more research about the feasibility of those and that those don't actually distract drivers versus cause them to be more cautious because we see them, even in light of the research that you are talking about.
Well, I'm not talking about painted crosswalks. I'm talking about leaving crosswalks as standard issue crosswalks and the paint around that creates those safe buffer zones around the bollards for the curb cuts or artwork in the center of the street. Those are not crosswalks. So this is just standard crosswalks.
Now, I'm gonna throw a moment of history here, just so everybody in the room knows it. The southwest corner of First and Water Street, going up the hill there behind the laundromat or the cleaners, at one time housed the largest greenhouse in the community of Batavia. And it went all the way from Main Street, all the way down to First Street, and it was built on the side of the hill. And so I am told that one of the problems that had was, is that, you know, they were constantly in there all year long watering everything. And a lot of the water ran out and the, the intersection at Water and First Street, some things were done with it to kinda make this water kind of get out of there real quick because there was so much water coming into it on a daily basis from all this watering that was going on in the greenhouse. So that's just another factor. I, I've often thought if somebody comes in and I, I think we're gonna get it one of these days with a project to build something on that property, they're probably gonna wanna do a soil re-expiration. And I don't know what they're gonna find because goodness knows what was dumped there when it was the greenhouse. But, you know, we do have pictures of the Fox River crossing underneath First Street right there by, it would be just to the east of Batavia Enterprises buildings where Hearth and Hammer is. Well, that was, the whole river was right there and it ran underneath the U.S. Wind Engine and Pump Company where Walgreens and everything is. And they used to run their wheels and pumps with the water from the river there. There's that, that property has a very interesting piece of Batavia history associated with it.
River Road track down the middle of Water Street too, didn't it?
Okay. Anybody in the audience that sat here all night and waited to listen to this, wanna come up and talk about it?
Hi, I'm Annie Scholl from Hearth and Hammer. I just wanna express my excitement that this intersection is being talked about. I've also stared at it often and seen the terrifying near misses and the children on their bikes and all the things. And I will say, I'm happy to hear the movement away from the one-way because I know when schools are let out, it does get completely backed up to a standstill even as it is. I love the idea of improving the crosswalks immediately. I think that'd be amazing. I'm often going to my store with my own child and I have to explain like, this dark part is not the street and this light part is the street. So I understand there is infrastructure things that aren't gonna change quickly. But I do love the idea of doing the things that are cheap and effective and will increase safety. I'm also curious if there's any way to create another sort of crosswalk coming from sort of the Walgreens Plaza area or the Windmill Plaza, I guess, where like East China Inn is, headed towards our side because a lot of people cross there. I don't know if it can be something similar to downtown on Wilson Street where there's the crosswalk and there's the, you know, stop for pedestrian or even just the suggestion of some sort of crosswalk. But people cross there all the time in lieu of the fact that there is not that crosswalk availability because I understand the, the drainage issues. And I appreciate you all thinking about that because I don't want my store to be flooded.
That's a very good point.
Yeah.
It's a good idea because you got the animal clinic right there too. And I have to take my dog over there, cross the street right there, you know, I mean.
Yeah. And to Leah's point,
I park in the parking lot over there.
Yeah, it crosses right there anyway too.
And to Leah's point, the kids do come from McDonald's or Walgreens and they cross there. And traditionally, they would go through the back parking lot, which was honestly terrifying for me to watch. So at least if we're leading them to a sidewalk, that seems better than this sort of no man's land that's happening behind there. But I love the idea of the painted, you know, about bollard, bollard sort of thing. So yeah, I just appreciate you all taking the time to really think about the pedestrian safety in that area. Because staring out the window, I'm like, I don't want to be safety in that area because staring out the window, I'm like, I don't want to be putting my own customers at risk asking them to come. And I think, too, I understand there hasn't been a lot of accidents, but we're not, I appreciate that the focus is also on like, well, how can we get people to come to this area because they do want to, and I'm glad you came for a lobster roll. So thank you all so much.
Hi, I'm Ed Stetter. I'm the managing director at Batavia Enterprises, and at this point, I think I'm just here to say something so that my boss knows that I waited this long. But really, though, I appreciate the city's consideration of the new businesses that are in the area. Obviously, the one-way is gonna make going to work very, very difficult for the hundreds of people who work in those businesses there. I think the only thing that might have been overlooked, too, is the backtracking that's gonna happen going through the plaza, and that's a very complicated spot already. So if you direct more people over to Wilson and they have to come back, that's bad. You know, we look forward to working with the city very closely on a comprehensive solution for this intersection because we recognize that changes need to be made, and so that's the only thing I'll add. Thanks.
We'll be talking to you again. Anybody else? You know, I think this is one of those that we're, I think, we're pretty much all in agreement that we wanna do something immediate, and if that's the crosswalks and get that out there. It occurred to me as we're listening here that we have the little pop-up pedestrian, you know, yield for pedestrian signs that are on Wilson in several different spots. Is that something that we could use, especially coming down the hill, on the west side of Water Street? Could we put one of those out there in the center lane?
Normally, you put that with a crosswalk.
Right, but that's what I'm saying, is at the crosswalk, could we put one of those up there? Because that is an impediment, that's something that slows people down when they see that.
Yeah, at the west leg, just like you do in the bottom at Water Street and Wilson.
Right, exactly. Is that something we can do out there as well? I mean, I think that's just another step towards trying to make that calmer, slowed down, and more obvious to people that you have to pay attention. Abby?
Just really quick for clarification, are we doing crosswalks on all four?
No, we do not have a receiving crosswalk at this corner.
Because there's no sidewalk.
There's nothing to go to.
The south leg.
So we all know, though, that everybody's still gonna be crossing there, right?
So, yes, so it'll be only here and here.
Would we have to discuss with, do a crosswalk, say, down at the exit from the plaza towards the entrance to BEI's lower parking lot?
If he can Google Zoom over there, Google Street View over there, we would need to make it ADA compliant, so that's, that would be probably later this summer if we do a sidewalk and curb program. Could you Google east there, Rahad, down the hill?
East on First. Because I'm trying to think if there is an ADA at the end of the plaza, you know, like the entrance to the animal hospital there. I think there's already an ADA there.
Right there, Rahad, turn around.
Yeah. We got something.
You're making me sick.
Yeah, that's what I'm worried about because I know the comment was made, go, keep going, one more notch and then turn north, Rahad. One more notch and then turn north because Google takes you a little bit too far. All right, so right there in front of that white car, though, is the sidewalk that was referenced. If you look due south from that, just turn, don't move, due south from that puts you actually in the driveway. So you don't want a mid-block crosswalk that's dumping you out of the driveway for BEI.
What about right there, though?
Yeah, you'd have to do the mid-block crosswalk there. I mean, move.
To the west of the driveway.
Yeah, just, just to the east of the driveway.
We have to see the line out there.
Right there, thank you. Yeah, that's it, Rahad.
That'd be a good spot, though.
Yeah, there's nothing wrong with that being a mid-block crosswalk. I don't know that it'll accomplish the goal of directing kids onto the sidewalk.
I think it would help.
It's gonna help.
I think for people that use the parking lots, the only thing I'll say is.
One of McDonald's works really well.
BEI might not like the fact that we're making it easier to park in their lot and then walk over to other buildings, but they are their building, so it should be okay with them.
Well, it's on public screen.
I just know how protective they are of the parking spaces they have.
It's true, there's signs.
Yeah.
Right now, I'm not sure, Rahad, you can look. I don't know that there's, I don't know that that's set up legal right now for a crosswalk, but we can, we can make it to be.
Yeah, we can, we can make some improvement.
Yeah, we can make that improvement there with sidewalk.
You might have to, yeah, take a few out.
Because again, you know, through the winter months, when there wasn't a lot of snow, there was a lot of people that were going that way to get down to the indoor farmer's market and not always parking there, me being one of them. You know, that's a pedestrian traffic path.
That, that mid-block crosswalk, I would guess, is gonna function much like the one at McDonald's, which actually functions pretty good because the visibility is good. One mid-block crosswalk that scares me to death is the Foltos Crosswalk. I think it's a terrible mid-block crosswalk because it's constantly blocked by parked cars.
Yes, or parked SUVs or parked trucks.
That one, I think, should disappear tomorrow, but that's my two cents.
This would be a good spot, though, I think, because you're directing, you gotta just, people just gotta get used to it. They get educated.
This one's got, this one's got nice visibility.
Go down there and cross the street instead of using the intersection that everybody's scared about.
Now you have crosswalk to do it in.
This one won't happen till later this summer.
Right, and that's fine.
When's the sidewalk and curb program going on?
So, City Council, I ordered this today or next week, so probably sometime out to July, we can probably get that done.
Abby?
In addition to the crosswalks, can we take whatever vote needs to happen to talk about the painted corners and bollards as well?
Yeah, that'll be up to City Council.
I vote yes.
We just need, besides just a generic statement, though, we need to know what to do. So you guys need to provide specific direction as to what you want. I've heard painting, I've heard colors, I've heard bollards, I've heard bumpouts, I've heard everything. So just, you need to provide us with direction as to what you want.
As far as the crosswalks that we talked about.
That's the problem, you keep hearing more ideas.
The crosswalks that we talked about, the two legs that you could do the high-vis crosswalks.
Yep.
Do we have to take that to a council meeting and vote on that?
Why don't we just make it all as part of your motion? Why don't you just do a one comprehensive motion for everything that you want out there?
More visible, that's going to slow people down. I think those corners, the painted corners that Abby presented a year and a half ago or whatever would be something that could also, it's not, it's not a crosswalk, we could do that ASAP for very cheap. I think that would be perfect. I'm looking at pictures of cities all over the United States that have that, and it is very alarming, startling when you see it on the road. Yeah, paint.
Well, I, just with my concern again, because I don't think we wanna put the bollards out there because of the whole access area, and then my only concern that I expressed before with that is just because it's painted there and the people are standing in the street thinking that they're safe doesn't mean, it's still the street. So that, that leaves me with a concern about just painting something to make it look like it's safe when it's still standing in the street.
I think this is, I don't know, I feel like we need to bring a plan back after having looked at how to make those painted areas as safe as possible for people because, yeah, you are encouraging people to stand in the street, and I wanna make sure that we're doing it the right way.
Now, are we gonna?
Right now, the turning templates would suggest that a truck turning there will roll into the painted area, so that's why I need direction from City Council as to what you want, because right now, I'm not sure how we prevent a truck from rolling into a painted area where pedestrian is standing.
But if it's a white-stripped crosswalk, they have to yield to the pedestrian. If the pedestrian's standing.
Crosswalk, yes.
In the crosswalk.
But if they're standing at the southeast corner with a painted, painted bumpout where there is no crosswalk.
That's my concern.
Skip that one.
I think at some point, you start to overanalyze it. I mean, if you haven't, if you haven't been downtown Chicago recently, everything's painted. So, and there's cars that roll through there all the time, there's, it's not ideal, but it's also, I mean, I hear what you're saying, Chris, but I don't think, maybe with kids, you know, there needs to be some sort of signage or whatever, but like, adults are not just gonna be walking out and waiting in the middle of the street just because it's painted. I think most people realize that that's there for cars. I mean, most people, or designates an area where a car shouldn't be, basically, is what it's saying.
I totally get that, but then why would you wanna just, I mean, the crosswalks, I think is fine.
Honestly, because it's cheap and quick, and we can test.
It's not cheap when you get sued because somebody's standing in the paint thinking they're safe and that it is. Because just because you say adults are smart enough not to do so, doesn't mean they're not, I mean.
Can we fight that in court? We gotta be able to fight that.
Well, and there's no examples of that happening. Like, these are, these examples all over the country, and that hasn't happened.
My only concern is when we do see those examples, they tend to be on wider roads where there's more room to still have the traffic and have the bumpout. I'm just a little bit leery about this intersection and how narrow the roads are here.
Let's do a Mako.
Yeah, I was gonna say, like, if you go up, if you just take the, like, the aerial view again of this intersection, you can see the wear and tear of where cars actually go and where they don't go. There's so much space there of where cars are not going, that's just extra pavement, that's just extra lane for pedestrians to cross. That's a really wide road. That is not a normal width road.
It's inviting to cut the corner rather than take the full turn.
Yeah.
About 30 feet across.
A cautious driver, you still lean into it. Just wanna see the crosswalks out there. Get the crosswalks done, and then we figure out what the next step is. You know, incrementally, we really wanna try to make that a safer intersection.
I'm good with that as direction, it's movement forward.
Yep, but I also wanna say that it took us six months to even have a second conversation. It can't take another six months to do the next increment. Like, this isn't, that, this, that's not a fair, like.
I would say bring us back a plan of what you feel like should be painted out over there at the next council meeting.
My PowerPoint is not to scale, but like, it shows the corners, like, it shows the actual, I know it's not an engineering drawing, but I think we're, I think we're overthinking this. I think there's. Can we request a drawing from engineering for our next council meeting, or is that even appropriate at council? I'm not sure.
We can, we can prepare something.
Okay.
So you wanna see all this getting painted so that I understand?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you can make it as tight as you want, it's just that trucks are gonna go encroaching to the other lane, but that's, that's fine. I mean, everybody.
If certain trucks have to roll through it, I'm not concerned about that. It's, 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 do it on purpose, you're just getting about your day, and then, you know, again, it's inviting to kind of, you know, lean into that corner, corner, however you wanna say it, right? So I, you know, I think, again, we're just, we're overanalyzing a little bit, and that's weird for me to say.
I think maybe it's because we're getting past that 10 o'clock mark that Leah Lehman talks about.
Mentioned the 10 o'clock, but then I noticed that Susan Rousseau is still here, and we're not gonna send her away again, so.
But I do share the same concern as Gaddy that, you know, if we paint, you know, people are gonna think that they are allowed to stand there, and that invites other things.
I'm worried we're trading one, one perception for another because the data would suggest there isn't a safety concern out there, but there is a perception concern out there, and now we will have a perception of safety while standing in a painted area out in the middle of the road.
I mean, that, I'm sorry.
Is it possible, and I can't remember what your drawings were, where you talked about the bollards and everything, is it possible at that corner, that southwest corner, to put some bollards? Just that one area to kind of direct traffic around that corner to help them, slow them down? Not saying all four corners to create it, but because that's the one question, not only paint it, but also have the bollards to kind of direct them around, that gives the pedestrians a safety area for, for crossing. It doesn't stop the people that are heading west, turning onto Water Street, because I was given direct feedback that's scary, too, especially when cars are coming down on a bike trying to cross that. But that might be something to even test out for the summer.
Putting it on the trucks is tough there, because if you put those out, they, they can't make that, that turn. I thought about the same thing, and then I ran it through my head.
But you know what? They'll go slow. You can, you can make it through anything if you go slow.
Go through my neighborhood. I mean, I have a 100-year-old neighborhood they go through. Right, but the same trucks.
Driving a truck through a neighborhood is different expectation than driving it through where you need to go make your deliveries and things of that nature.
But I want them to be approaching the street the same way they approach my neighborhood.
Would it be possible to have one of our city government trucks, like, go down and do an experiment, taking that corner?
That's that presentation that I have it right here.
Right there.
That's kind of like.
This is software that we use, like, when designing parking lots and things like, there's the car size and it shows how, how tight a vehicle can turn through there.
I'm sorry.
This isn't a semi-truck, this is just a fire truck.
Right here, this is the intersection we're talking about. Like, you can see how that truck has to.
Fire truck, correct? One-piece fire truck.
Yeah, one-piece fire truck, so you can see how it's like encroaching this traffic, but it's encroaching it anyway right now. Somebody can argue that, right?
Yeah, I mean, how often is a fire truck gonna go that direction to turn onto Water Street? I would see them going across Main Street.
It's not only fire trucks, it's the delivery trucks, because Route 31, all the delivery trucks, like, any beer getting delivered or.
But they, yeah, but they're also coming off of Shemway and turning right in front of Limestone and cutting that corner all the time.
That's what I'm saying, that it's, they're cutting it anyway, and it's, it's cutting into the other side, so you can argue that they're doing it now, so make it more tighter. What's big deal?
Yeah, I mean, they're already doing it all through downtown Batavia and all the other intersections.
So how about we bring back some alternatives to you in the next council meeting, and then you choose, you mix and match, and we implement.
You wanna take a vote on doing the crosswalks anyway?
Can we do the crosswalks now?
I think we should do the crosswalks. I don't, I don't think that that requires us to go to a vote. I mean, I think that's something that we can direct staff to. I mean, it's not like it's $100,000 to do two crosswalks. Am I right, Gary?
You're exactly right.
I think, and I think we have pretty much a total agreement on that, that we want the crosswalks out there.
So the ladder, ladder-style crosswalk, right?
Yep, the high-vis ones, big white stripes.
With a sign in the middle saying.
With the sign in the middle.
And we can all, four of us at a time can walk across it.
Just like the Beatles.
It's like the Beatles, yeah.
I waited all night to use that. All night.
Okay, we'll, we'll bring some alternatives back to you with either painting or other things.
One more, Abby?
Yeah, I just wanted to make one final comment, too, just, and when we're talking about it next time, that we're only gonna be able to maximize one variable, right? Like, if I can remember anything from high school, trig or whatever that was, like, you can maximize one variable. So we have to pick our favorite. If it's function, it's function. If it's safety, it's safety, and we choose safety over, we have to sacrifice some functionality for some user group, right? And, and obviously pedestrians are, and bicyclists are my favorite user group. I'm not shy about that, but it's for real reasons. Like, when we talk about our downtown businesses, like, it's the people on the street that indicate whether or not our downtown economy is thriving, and if we're looking around and all we see is cars, our downtown is struggling. We have to see people. It's really important for Second Fridays, it's important every single day if we want our downtown to thrive. We have to pick, we have to pick, we have to decide one priority, and we have to maximize that one variable. So that's my last comment for the next discussion.
Any other question?
Oh, but I have a movie court, I was told there'd be no math.
Thank you so much for your input.
All right, thank you. Now we'll move on to item 12, which is the discussion of Illinois legislation, support of topics for House Bill 5315, House Bill 5021, and Senate Bill 3637. Who wants to touch this one?
I believe we're odd up here.
It might be a shorter discussion. It might be a shorter discussion. No offense, Gary, I didn't mean it in a bad way.
I get it. So it's been probably, what, four weeks plus since we've talked about these topics? Just to get you up to speed, right now, 5021, 3637, and 5315 are all still, went back to committees. It's not to say they won't be coming out of committees, but between now and the end of the legislative session, we'll know in the next really week and a half here, because the legislative section, legislative session in theory is supposed to wrap up by the end of May. So whether those will come out of committee or not, be attached to some other bill or become part of some other bill, Springfield, it's shocking, but Springfield at 2:00 in the morning has been known to introduce legislation and move it forward, so it's not over till it's over.
We'll be awake for it, Gary.
Yeah, it's not over until it's over in Springfield. Council already, already took a position, expressed. Council already, already took a position expressing opposition, and then it was asked that we bring back a separate discussion for those items where council would express support. I did prepare a memo again back in April 17th, so it's been almost a month ago now since, since this has been pending. We brought it to COW, and then it got tabled. So we're back here tonight, and very quickly, to Alderman Wolf's point, we can jump to the two options. Option A would be to approve a formal resolution codifying those items that the city is in support of, and I wanna run through those items tonight for council to vote on, if you want to do that. Or option B would be just to provide direction to staff without formal resolution to move forward with what seemed to be the consensus of our last discussion about things that you would support. And that was the consensus of, of jumping into planning, preparing for the future. So do we wanna start with a basic question of do we want to, to explore the resolution? And if we do, then we can talk about items or maybe some bullet points that I haven't included in here. But, but if we did a formal resolution, we did the formal customer complaint process at the state level, revisions to the Open Meetings Act, and I can go through these in more detail, formal integrated resource planning, or returning to net metering versus net billing. So I guess the first question should be, does council want to talk about doing a formal resolution in support of any of those items?
Thought that when we talked last, we'd already given the direction that we, you know, we sent the letter saying we're opposed to everything, and that we were just going to then move forward with, you know, the long-range planning with this. I know that the resolution was still something that was really a viable situation, but I guess I'm more in favor of the second option.
I'm gonna put Laura on the spot, or Rahat, because they were both at the IMUA meeting on Friday. I was attending my daughter's graduation from college, so I was not there. But Laura, you, can you speak to the planning? Because, because, because you guys just had that discussion as to, like, next steps for planning?
Yes.
For utility.
Do you mean from the, the standpoint of...
Cost of service, rate study, infrastructure, resource, all the above.
Right, exactly. And, you know, it, it seems to be from the legislation, the changes that they've made to it with regard to the net metering, that it's, it's almost like the way that they're talking about it is that it's the, what's the other one, the billing, the, I always forget the other term.
Net billing versus net metering.
Net billing versus net metering?
Yeah.
It's almost like net metering has become net billing, because they are buying into this concept that, that, you know, you can determine what the fair rate is, and that might just be the energy cost versus what your cost of service is. And so it makes it more imperative that maybe we look at our next step being a study of our cost of service, because there is, and the woman who is from the solar company that attended our meeting via Zoom even suggested that, you know, if you unbundle your rates to your customers, then you can charge for the cost of service regardless of whether it's a solar, non-solar customer, and then reimburse the solar customer for the energy that they send back to the system for only what the energy costs, because they're still utilizing all of the other aspects of your service. We haven't done a cost-of-service study, I think, maybe...
Two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine.
Two thousand and eight or nine. So I think that really is something that we should consider as a next step. Was that where you were getting at?
That's where I was getting at, but I'll, I mean, I'm, I'm probably in the camp, too, of multiple studies, because we just finished the UIC Capstone project, which started to talk about infrastructure.
Right.
So that's also would be a next study, is, is taking that Capstone project and really then using it as the basis for a formal and larger study on infrastructure in how do we, how do we make our infrastructure more sustainable and adaptable as more solar systems or battery systems come online? Then the third study was taking both of those and wrapping them into rates.
Yes.
And looking at rates.
Right.
And all three of those are linked, obviously.
But talking about, and, and it, like, in prioritization, there is one other study that at some point needs to be done, is in anticipation of the closure of the plants, where will our energy come from in the future? But to study that, you know, thirteen years from now, you'd have to be, you know, quite the prognosticator to know what energy situation was gonna look like at that point in time, you know, in 2035 or in 2038. So we think these other studies are more important to do now, but we should, you know, still have that on the horizon to plan plenty ahead of time for when we are able to and when we need to do that.
Yeah, I would agree with making sure that we, you know, cost of, you know, service study definitely needs to be done. I would think that, you know, we have to, at some point, figure out how we're going to base what we're gonna do when the plant closes down, but develop a plan for that, because I don't think that it's right to do it today and then have to change it three times between now and then, you know, and, and try to figure out how we're gonna stage that out to be ready for that.
Right, and more imperative is what is the electrification of things, and what impact is that gonna have on our system? Infrastructure is really the more pressing need right now.
I've always wondered what would happen to our electrical grid in the city itself if twenty, twenty-five percent, thirty percent of our houses went all electric or all had EVs and had to add, you know, an extra forty-amp service or an extra forty-amp, fifty-amp service to be able to, to charge.
Steve is tracking all that now. So Steve's tracking solar installations, EV installations, battery installations, anyone who actually comes through us and then gets a permit. We're tracking all of that.
Right, and to be able to develop that pattern and see, okay, over this many years, we added this many percent to our, our load, and then, you know, how does that, what really is going to affect that or drive that into the future? And how fast are we gonna have to be able to change to that or assume that?
Things like distribution transformers that we'll have to, have to swap out, or, you know, the, the actual distribution lines, you know, those are things we're gonna need to be looking at as a system.
And which of the many studies that we just talked about is studying that? Like, what, the scenario Alan just mentioned, the twenty-five percent in electrification of cars or, or heat pumps?
That really kind of falls under the general, general headline of that infrastructure study. Where we say, you know, what happens if twenty-five percent of the people in town have an EV? And we're gonna assume that those are relatively dispersed throughout our residential areas. What does that mean for our system? Because then our system may have to, we may have to upsize conductors in order to be able to carry more electrons to those, to those homes. That's an infrastructure study that gets at the answer, though, to the, to the, you know, solar or EV installations.
And it identifies those investments that we need to make in the future so that we are both ready for those changes and also resilient, and that will inform the rate study and as to, you know, how much we need to be charging today to be able to pay for those things tomorrow.
Well, and the policy is on who's going to pay.
And then who's gonna pay? That's the cost-of-service study.
Is it, is it me, because I set the neighborhood over the, the hump in terms of electric generation or whatever? Or is it borne by the city? And I think that goes to also a bigger question about just kind of establishing a shared vision or set of values that the city is saying, like, this is what we're going to prioritize, so this is where our investments will go, versus we are not going to promote that, and we're gonna put that burden on individual homeowners, and just kind of establishing those policies as part of all this planning process.
It's all part of the planning process. I agree with you.
And, and to your email earlier, too, about how, you know, the, the priorities back in the day was like, we, our first priority is to, is to own our generation. Like, that is, that is the condition of the day. These are the forces for today. This makes the most sense for Batavia, so we're gonna go all in on ownership. And obviously, we live in a very different world now, and we can't predict what that world will be in the future. But at the same time, I almost feel like we have to have that conversation that they had back when they decided self-ownership is, is where, we have to do that based on where we are. Even if we can't change it today, I think we should still be establishing those priorities and establishing those values on where the world is and where we think the best place for Batavia should be, even if we can't be there and work towards that.
Are we going to, do you want staff to come back with the resolution on any of these bills, on the things we, Gary mentioned, as far as what we feel are good points? Are we gonna kick those around again, or are we gonna hold off on that?
I'm not sure we need a resolution. I thought that the discussion of the planning is all we really need to do right now, right? I mean...
Well, this came up under, under the, discussing the legislation, whether or not we wanna send a letter of support for any parts of it.
I think we've already, well, I already set my position on it.
You're much else, I think. At, at this point, this is...
Pursue the studies?
Yeah, pursue the studies. And, you know, if we get any alerts that any of this is going back beyond just, you know, a, a lower-level committee, and we're gonna get some votes on this, then I think we have to be ready and prepared to act pretty quickly and contact everybody at that point. I mean, they know what we don't like about it. And that's the things that can hurt us.
Right.
And hurt the utility and hurt citizens.
I think that was an important thing to get out.
In the context of the studies, we as staff would plan to come forward in 2024 with those studies and probably the associated budget amendments, because none of them are budgeted this year, but, but I think we, we understand council's desire. So that'll be on our radar to get moving on those this year.
Yeah.
I think it was a good exercise, because we know next time that we do this, you know, that we need to be conscious to not only say, this is what we don't like, but also be prepared to say, this is what we do like. Because the, adding the do like was kind of almost like an afterthought.
I think it's a good way to try to communicate with them, to not just go in and say, hey, stop this, we don't want you doing that, but, hey, these three things we like about this, and it's something we can support, and we can support you passing something with those things in it.
Well, I think we'll have an opportunity again. Again, if not this spring, we will in the fall session, or next spring, or next fall. I don't, I don't believe any of this is going to just stop.
A few, few times.
But how it looks.
Yes.
That's where we wanna...
I think we'll get plenty of practice.
Yeah.
Okay. Twenty-six minutes are up, Gary.
All right, I'll leave it.
All right. We're, we're moving on to item 13, project status.
Okay, um, I, on Monday morning, one of the very first emails I got was great. It was from the Illinois Department of Public Health, who was getting back to us about the question of their, their evaluation of the public health risks associated with the foam in Mahoney Creek. And I was so relieved to see that they believe that there is no impact to public health, either, you know, from going in the water, playing in people's yards. And then also, I just wanted to let everybody know that the first testing was done on private wells located within two hundred feet of Mahoney Creek, but I'm hoping that with the news we received from IDPH about, you know, the actual creek water and the soils adjacent to the creek, that we, fingers crossed, will have similar results there as well. The IEPA did send a draft of their report, but there were some inaccuracies in it. So we sent that back with some corrections. You know, Flint Group was identified as being in Geneva. And so just, they're gonna make those final corrections, and that should be available, hopefully, sometime this week. The, all five hundred of the reusable shopping bags have been distributed, and so Lori has ordered five hundred more of those. They're very, very popular.
Facebook said they came in today.
All right, yes, they did. The Facebook was right.
Never lies.
On May 3rd, community and economic development staff attended a proactive preservation meeting that was, the speaker was John Curley, Chief Development Service Officer with the City of Aurora. And the event focused on flexibility when rehabilitating historic structures and how that can drive economic developments. The downtown plan review with the committee, the whole, was rescheduled to the, this says May 28th COW meeting? Yes? So we are having a meeting on May 28th. It was rescheduled due to the large agenda that we had tonight. And permit applications and documents have been received for Tesla's improvements at the Batavia Square Development, and demolition permits have been issued this week for the existing buildings and tree removal at Main and Deer Path Road for the Ignite Rehabilitation Center project. In fire, Chief Hanson began his rotation as chairman of the Tricom Central Dispatch. And then both police and fire have had a number of public engagements. Chief Hanson attended the Batavia Brotherhood banquet with Mayor Schulke, and also DC Blowers attended that. Both the fire department and the police department participated in the Bike to School Day. Fire was at the Valley Shelter Workshop Pancake Breakfast on Sunday. And in the police department, Officer Robinson, who heads up and, and kind of leads the department in the, our involvement with Special Olympics, he attended the Regency Special Olympics Young Athletes Event that was at Alice Gustafson School on May 9th. And it's in, what that is, is a, an early childhood play program which introduces children's age two to seven to basic sports skills to share the joys of sports with children. And then also, officers from Batavia Police Department stopped by and were onsite at HC Storm Elementary School on Friday, May 10th, in support of the students participating in HC Storm's annual Thunder Run fundraiser. In public works, the contractor will be finishing utility and roadwork on South River Street and Union Avenue in the coming weeks. But it's anticipated that the first few weeks of the quarry pond season, the hall quarry will be affected by the construction activities. The intersection will remain open at all times, but there may be certain times when it is down to one lane. The roadwork is going to continue until early June. Sidewalks in the area will also be impacted, and there will be temporary ongoing closures there until early June. Lori reached out to the Park District today to, and we are putting together a joint messaging to the community about all of this. And then we are also going to continue, as we did last year, to have a crossing guard at the corner of 31 and Union to assist folks who are crossing that road until we can get that road diet in place. And as far as that goes, the mayor has sent another letter to the Secretary of Transportation, again, asking him to please expedite the permit for us being able to implement the road diet. The city is working with HR Green Engineering to submit a 319 grant application for improvements to Mahoney Creek in the area of Michael Wild Park. And if the city receives the funding, then the existing sewer within the park will be removed and the channel will be restored to its natural state, which will be a great improvement and in partnership with our friends at the Park District. And that's all I have, unless anybody...
How about some of the sidewalk at that park?
I'm sorry, what?
There's a lot of uneven, and like, broken sidewalk and kid, I, I mean, that's the park right by my house. Kids are tripping over it all the time. I'm getting, what are you guys doing about this?
Gotcha. And so on the public works page, there is, if you wanna request a sidewalk repair, there's, go ahead, Rahat, if you could maybe mention what the process is. We look to see if there, the gap is one inch or if the difference in the heights...
A couple of these are, yeah. I have pictures and stuff, but yeah.
We, we can go and look at it. It's, it's always on, on-call basis. If somebody complains, we go and take a look at it. I'm not completely sure whether these are in city's property or in Park District.
Are they in the park themselves?
They're in the park.
That's Batavia Park District.
So we can, we can notify them. We'll go and take a look at it and still notify Park District.
Too excited to wanna replace it.
I didn't see if they were excited or not.
I know exactly what you're talking about, it always floods down there and it's been.
Yeah.
Um, one of the questions that came from the Mahoney Creek um was from a resident that asked about our cost. And if you could tell the council what the plan is for that.
We would seek reimbursement from Flint Group for any costs associated with our response to this. And yet while at the meeting on the twenty ninth, they didn't say, sure, send over the bill and we'll reimburse you. They seemed to, when I said that, they seemed to expect that that was going to be part of this process, so. As well as um the Park District also assisted us with um distribution of invitation of the information at the beginning of this. Each one of the one hundred and twelve homes that back up to the creek. And so we want to make sure that they get reimbursed for um because those people were doing that after the end of their day. So I also have information about what they spent.
It was definitely a great conversation. Um, it's just too bad that it and and it was totally out of your control that we didn't have the results, it was more on the.
Very frustrating not to have the results, yeah, it it just.
Yeah, the state was the frustrating part of that whole meeting.
What?
The state. I mean, we, you know, everyone out Flint Group, those guys were, they seemed like, hey, listen, we made a mistake, we'll do whatever it takes. We're not the experts here, we're leaving it up to them, and then the IEPA guys had no answers for us on any, you know, what levels are harmful, what's this, you know, so that was. Definitely frustrating for folks.
Well, just understand, I I now have a good understanding on why it took so long to get the results back because they they definitely had to watch it grow. And as somebody that's waiting for some test results back, I'm waiting for those to grow.
Yes.
Science.
What?
Science.
Yeah, the expedited test results come back in three weeks. Those are some difficult tests and they preparing for being the one to take the samples. You can't have eaten fast food in the previous forty eight hours because the paper that fast food is wrapped in has PFAS on the inside of it. Uh, it's just incredible, the protocols that people have to go through to to do this testing.
Here's Clark.
You want a Big Mac? Nope.
Little PFAS with your Big Mac.
Okay, does anybody have any others? Mark?
Just really quickly, um, I want to apologize, um, Alderman Souffle rightly called me out earlier on my comment. Uh, equating the Skyline Drive um with the ceasefire. Um, my point was really just about um listening to our residents uh in that point, but you were absolutely right. Um, that was an unfair um comparison and I apologize to those that were offended by that.
Ellen.
Yeah.
Just real quick, um, something we heard a couple of times tonight from a couple of different residence groups, but we've heard it in the past also is. Um, frustration from the residents when they feel like things are thrown at them without a lot of lead time for really important topics that are going to impact them. Um, or where they did not seem to receive communication, even though we thought we sent them communication, so I just don't know if there's a way. For um city staff to tighten some of this up. Um, because what I would rather hear is residents come and be like, we heard about this a month ago, we're frustrated about it, we've done our research. But thank you for communicating, you know, or thank you for being so on top of it, like that's the kind of stuff I want to be hearing from the residents and not them being like. We just heard about this and we never, we never heard about this, you know, so um I don't know what that looks like, I'm just, you know. Representing them, I would like to to see maybe if we can um improve that.
I know with the last round of stuff that just got basically done between your house and my house on the zoning. Um, that I got a lot more upfront about from people that got it very early on, I mean, I got the letter too. Um, so I think that one was done and I think some of that is, I think, some of the protocols that we have, some of it is legal requirements. And some of it is we decide, you know, okay, we did the legal part of it, now we're doing the next step further out. I would say I think is, correct me if I'm wrong, Scott, but that's what happened with the the Skyline part. Is when we when we did the annexation of that property at the end, that's what that was a legal notice that had to go out to the property owners within certain area, right?
Yeah, well, the Skyline one, um, the annexation didn't require any notice to anybody other than the township and there there's certain legal requirements of of entities we have to give it to. We don't give any notice to the property owners because they are not directly affected by the annexation per se. So if we were annexing an individual's property, then yes, absolutely would be given notice.
There's a legal notice.
An axing the right of way only, there's no other notice other than to township, the schools and that, I think, so.
And then the next, uh, if I correct me if I'm wrong, Rahat, the next um notice that we gave with regard to Skyline Drive. Was when we were going out to put out the stakes for doing the survey. We have a, you know, policy that we would provide advance notice to anybody before we're going to be walking on their property to. Put out stakes and be doing surveying. Why that gentleman said he's the first house next to the fence and he didn't receive notice, I. I can't say.
Yeah, that was a little surprising, I'm not sure, um, like you are absolutely right, so when we were doing surveying. We informed the immediate neighbor that is close to that connection. Um, I'm not sure why he didn't get it, uh, because other neighbors got it. Um, maybe it's came from City of Batavia and and he's not a resident of City of Batavia, maybe he just didn't feel like reading it, I, that's a guess. Um, we have to also, like, you know, there was talk about, there's a big neighborhood, right? I mean, who do you send the notices out? We we um really focused on anybody along the Skyline Drive. We didn't go out too much on the and then you are not only spending more money. Sometimes people are like, it doesn't affect me, I don't even leave off of Skyline, so why? Um, so we do cut it off at some point, saying, you know, these people are not affected, so. Um, and then the second notice was about discussion. So we did send it out, I think, end of April, saying the discussion will be on May fourteenth. Now, is two weeks or three weeks is enough notice? Um, typically, that's what we always use, two to three weeks. Uh, but could it be longer, yeah, but if you send it out too early, then people say. Ah, you send it out and I forgot about it and, you know. Send me again, right, I mean, it's so, so we try to uh come in within that two to three weeks so people see it and they they have a chance to come and talk about it, so.
And with regard to the annexation. You get that letter, that's going to put your hair right on fire when you see something like that, you know, and and it's the very beginning of the process. And we try to say, you know, this is the beginning, contact us with your questions, here are the benefits of annexation, which really. If you wanted to be, you know, unincorporated versus in the city. Let's be honest, they've got a lot more freedoms when they're living in an unincorporated area, so it's a little bit of a tough sell.
Yeah, and we've we've developed the process for that letter over over the years and we find it a number of times, you know, we added this benefit sheet, we have, you know, given additional time. Um, and it's a multi-step process that we do when we're talking about these annexations. So, you know, the first letter that goes out is just the, hey, you know, we're reaching out to you, um, you know, we're looking to annex, you know, your area. Um, you know, we we submit the petition for them if they want to voluntarily annex, sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. And then after that, you know, then we we talk, you know, in some cases, we have annexation agreements with individual property owners because they have specific circumstance that we look at. So, you know, we do talk about them and negotiate with them individually in many cases. And then, you know, if things don't work out like we did with the last one, you know, then we we move ahead to the involuntary process. That involves yet another notice that requires certified notice to the property owners. Um, and there's certain legal requirements and timeframes we have to follow in order to do that, so. Um, and then ultimately it gets in front of you and and then you make those decisions, but we we try to give people a lot of time, I mean, these, you know, we've been doing these, you know, at least ten years now and and it's and, you know. Um, we do take them one by one because it does take a lot of time to process them, you know, develop petitions, develop Platts, legal notices, ordinances, everything we have to do. So there's there's a there's a process that we have to follow and it's and it takes a while.
I appreciate the feedback and we can always, you know, make improvements, whether it be to what area we send the these notices to or their content, so thank you.
Just like any, just, you know, evaluation.
Sure.
Could this be improved, could if we send out a week earlier, you know, just.
I think that that really, because I really like the idea, but I think sometimes, like, I don't know about you guys, but I can see something on my door and then I. Rip it off and throw it away thinking it was, you know, some solicitor or whatever, so there and there, you know, you hit a hot topic item, people are going to get stirred up and whatever it is in their own personal life. But I do like the idea of getting, you know, not necessarily the uh notice, but a feedback form. That then they feel that they're, okay, they're getting some participation out of it and then and then it's on them, right? I mean, at some point, people have to be a, you know, citizen of their own lives and and have to look after this thing on their own, I know. You know, I've said it before, but it's something I've learned through this process is I'm going to be paying attention more throughout my life, so. Um, but uh, yeah, I agree with your statement, but I like that last part right there.
Just real quick, um, one piece of feedback that I got from the conversation that I had regarding the annexation.
Yes.
She kept asking, besides just the benefits, and I know we la, um, that we um list some. But how can we list those to what our um strategic plan is? So if we're able to say, hey, we have a strategic plan and that this is one of the priorities that goes towards that. I think that that would help because when I brought that up to her, she's like, well, what strategic plan it was? I wasn't really in the right process to think about everything that was on that.
Sure.
But one thing that I, you know, thought of and I shared with um Alderman Lehman was, you know, how we're connecting the sidewalks and getting those students to our schools. Because we'll now have an opportunity to be able to do that, so I think if we're able to incorporate that into our letter saying. Hey, we have the strategic plan and a lot of residents have come to us now saying, what's on your strategic plan? And they reference that. If we can now put that in the communication, I think that that would also be helpful instead of saying, they're like, we don't care about electric, we don't care about this, but if we can pinpoint like this is what our priorities are. I think that that would be even more proof on why it's important.
We can look into that and see what, you know, refinements we can do on that, sure.
Yeah.
If if I can add, um. I think I think we engineers, we do a better job with construction because that's what we do. Not a lot of planning projects, um, so this one, to your point, we could have sent the letter out two months early. Um, so I would take that, I mean, you you will see the construction project, we have it on our website, people are getting letter, it's, I mean, we are talking to Lori all the time. To say, you know, let's do that. Uh, and it's going out multiple channels, this one. There will be so much opposition, I think we probably didn't calculate that, you know, we, I mean, people like, you know, connectivity, you know, that's. We engineers think it that way, that, yeah, people will like that extra connection, right? I mean, it's going to take me shorter time to get to my home or.
They like connectivity too, they just don't like it on their street.
So 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 like, you know, several people mentioned about Branson Drive, that they they now be able to take that. But that's also going to go through somebody's neighborhood, right? That's a cut through also.
Not their neighborhood.
Not their neighborhood, that's what.
Yeah, it's not their neighborhood, that's what's okay.
We we probably um have miscalculated that, if you want to say, the the uh anger that will come out. Uh, then we would have sent the letter out long time ago, I mean.
Right.
We were sending it out anyway, so why, please, so we'll 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 do a, we'll do a better job with the planning projects going forward as far as communications. It's a learning lesson.
Okay, motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.